Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Joint City Council and Film Commission meeting of May the 8th, 2012. Welcome. This is a nice big group. Happy to have you all here. I'd like them ready to stand for the presentation.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
There's a couple of seats up front. There's two seats. There's three seats in the front room, and three up here. And two more seats in that front room. Person here. Come on in. We're going to move on to the roll call, and I would like the roll call to reflect that all city council members are present and accounted for today.
Okay. And from the Film Commission, we have two that are absent. That would be Paul and Nancy. And the rest are not present. Okay. Yes, okay. Over here on this side is Nancy Colman, and Mary Brogie, she is Vice Chair of the Film Commission.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Is it off? Oh, is that better? Okay. Pat Hoos, and Mary Brogie, who is Vice Chair of the Film Commission.
Are the chairs kind of free? Okay. And we're going to move on to item four, which is approval of the agenda. And what happened in your press?
I would like to please work on this seven Joint City Council Commission business items. If A could become B.
Okay.
B, C, and C, A.
Okay. Are there any comments from the council? Or actually, this is your agenda. How about you guys are all in favor? Okay. Then I guess we need a motion. I also have a change. I'd like to move item sixteen... sixteen A to number five. So if I could get a motion to approve the amended agenda.
(inaudible)
I have a motion in a second. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
So now's the time for presentations and announcements. Are there any presentations and announcements from the council?
Good evening. On May 26th, there is going to be a grand opening of SPARC, which is the Santa Paula Animal Rescue Center, and it's the first shelter in Ventura County with a no-kill policy, which assures another chance for a new life with a loving family to pets who find themselves homeless. There will be many dedicated folks there that have devoted countless hours toward making this a reality for the communities within Ventura County. It will be taking place at Saturday, again Saturday, May 26th, from 12:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m., and the address is 705 East Santa Barbara Street, Santa Paula. And donations are being accepted. Just like more information, there's a flyer out there. Any?
Any other announcements?
In case you haven't heard, there's a May Festival on the 19th, and there's a parade, and I am turning in a council information. I am turning this in tonight to some similar person for a parade. Council people, if you want to comment, let me know, and we'll make it here.
I'll be open.
One more. Since we have a healthy group this evening here, we'd like to encourage everybody to enroll in BC Alert. If you don't know what that is, come and talk to me, talk to Chief Rios, and also with Monica, too. And it's important for everyone to enroll into this in case of emergency. You're going to be called, you're going to be text, you're going to be... Find a way that we can get hold of you in case you need to evacuate. It's extremely important for you to enroll. Go to bcalert.org?
Org.
bcalert.org. And org, we might have some forms over here that we can give you before you leave there. Please sign this before you leave tonight, and it's extremely important for your future emergencies. Thank you.
We have forms out on the front table to your right as you exit, so if you need to grab one of those and fill those out, it'd be great. Appreciate it.
All right. Thank you. Any other announcements or presentations from the council? City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. As many of you may know, who've been following the city budget, the state of California, at the beginning of the fiscal year in July, they abolished the redevelopment agencies. And over the past several months, what we've been finding out is what that means to us financially. Late, in the past couple of weeks, we had submitted a financial information to the State of California Department of Finance. And what has happened is that the State of California, the Department of Finance, is that they have rejected some of the items that we have on our list as key things that they need to pay us back for, such as there's about a $400,000 debt over at the Town Theater, and we were counting on that money to be used to help balance our budget, our general fund budget going into this next fiscal year, which starts July 1st. We're having a dispute over some negative fund balances. They're disallowing some of our administrative costs that we had requested to be able to pay. And what this all means is that quite possibly, it's just going to put us more in the hole for our general fund budget. We can't quantify that amount right now because we're still in dispute with the Department of Finance over the amount, and I expect that that will be resolved probably in the next couple of weeks. But it does mean that in terms of money that we thought we would be using to balance up this next year's budget, and this year's may not be available, and so that will have an impact on our budget moving ahead, and we wanted you all to be aware of that. So our financial challenges just got a little bit greater. We'll be presenting the budget to the city council at the beginning of June. That's when we start our hearings. The first hearing is on June 5th. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, City Manager. And if anybody wants to know, this was item 16A on the agenda. If you have a copy of the agenda, you can read the statement that she just made on paper. And we moved... That's why we moved this up to item five, because we wanted to make sure that everybody heard this important information, rather than now while everybody's here. So, okay. More to come on that. So are there any presentations or announcements from the Film Commission? All right. So we're going to move on then to public comments. And this is the time for public comments on items that are not on the agenda. So if anybody would like to speak on an item that's not going to be on the agenda, please fill out a speaker card and turn it in to the seat clerk. I do have a couple of speaker cards already. I have one for Ms. Norma Amaro.
Good evening. I'm Norma Amaro, and I reside at 165 Chasner Way. First, I'd like to start by saying thank you very much to Chappie Morris, Red Ortiz, the Super Seal and Stripe, and Butch Foy, plus other merchants that, with their permission, I was able to put up a sign for a tradition that we have at Vintage Pleasures. Once a year, we have a major clearance. It helps everyone. It helps the community. But these businesses, I asked them. I didn't just go do it. I asked for the permission. They gave me permission to put the signs up, and took them down immediately after. So thank you to all of them. Second, I wanted to give the public the date of Vanessa Herrera, the young author/illustrator that came up recently to talk to you about Pirate and the Mermaid's Curse. She will be doing her book signing this Saturday from 1:00 to 4:00 at Vintage Pleasures. She does have 25 books with her. However, she says you can buy them online, bring them in, meet her, and she will sign. The other thing... Actually, there's two more. For Grad Night Life, I don't know how they're doing that many. I don't know if they have enough. But Vintage Pleasures would like to donate, I think it's about 100 belts. I think the women's belts are red and black and brown. So if the organizer of the Grad Night Life would like to come to our shop, we'd like to give them a big box of brand-new belts. And if they want to sell them, or each graduate, make their mom buy one or some, then they're welcome to pay them and sell them and use the money for themselves. And lastly, I want to talk about the train tour buses. I've been doing this for years. It hasn't changed anything, but I don't quit. Last week, there were two very large tour buses parked right where we would like them to park, right in the corner of Main and Central, which was great. But I saw a woman standing outside the train, looking sort of perplexed, and I went and asked her what was going on. She says, "Well, we're parked here because Thomas the Train was taking their test out." They got here just a little bit too early to board the train, but not early enough to actually come down Central and do some shopping. And I told her that Central had a lot of restaurants and different types of businesses and shops. Would they like to come down after? She goes, "Well, it was scheduled to where they would get on the train, go to Santa Paula. The first stop, which would be a pretty long stop, would be at the Luz Cabo. Then the second stop would be somewhere in Santa Paula, where they would do their shopping and go and eat in restaurants or what have you." And then she goes, "Then, if there's time, when we come back into Fillmore, we'll come down Central." There wasn't any time. I feel like the train is based out of Fillmore. People get on it, they go down to Santa Paula, Santa Paula gets the business, they come back in time to board their bus and go home. It was very disappointing. It's been happening for years, and it probably will always happen for years. But I just want to let you know that a lot of the merchants were very disappointed because we feel that we've always been told the train is to bring tourists to us. What good does it do if they come in, board the train, and maybe I should just move my shop to Santa Paula? I'd be better off. But that's just how I feel, and I just wanted to let you know. Hopefully, someday, before I close my business, things will change. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Amaro. My next speaker is Ms. Ari Larson.
My name is Ari Larson, and today I'm representing Seroptimist International Fillmore, the Fillmore Chamber of Commerce, and Fillmore Pirate Relay for Life, Fillmore Pirate. In anticipation of the May Festival tomorrow, Wednesday, May 9th, we're having an event called 100 Years of Fun at the Public Library from 4:00 to 4:30 p.m., presented by Sean Diaz, who's our Fillmore May Festival Chair. It's open to children, school-aged children to come. It's a free event. Books will be read to them, and we'll do a craft. Also, our May mixer for Fillmore Chamber of Commerce is this Thursday, May 10th, at Elkins Ranch Golf Course from 5:30 to 7:00 p.m. Please come out and enjoy music and fun. Also, Verizon Wireless was having a grand opening on Friday, and that is being rescheduled to a future date. And last but not least, the Fillmore Pirate Relay for Life is looking for singers, local singers, any age, single groups, to audition for on Saturday, May 19th, which is during the festival, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. They need to call Josie at 524-0149 with their name, phone number, email address, and audition song request. Last year, this was a very popular event, so we hope it exists here as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Larson. All right. That's all the speaker cards I have right now. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak on an item that is not on the agenda? Okay. And we're going to move on to the Joint City Council Film Commission Business Items. And I'm going to turn it over to the chair.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay. Thank you to the council's panel this evening. Really appreciate it. The first item I'd like to discuss is the AFCI Expo, which is the Association of Film Commissioners International. This is an expo that we attend every year to, if we will, market our city for the location scouts to come out and film in our area. In 2011, as we were not here to present, it was held at the Disney Burbank Studios. It was outdoors, which kind of looked a little hairy because it was really misty and the day was boring to rain. The seminar was scheduled to close together, which hindered the ability for producers and directors to converse with the film commissions that were there, and there were also vendors. So it made it quite difficult for us to sell our town, our city, and our countries. There were companies there as well. Let's see. The location scouts, and this is our target, our audience, actually boycotted the event because they were asked to pay for admission for where it used to be part of their membership. They included the admission into this expo. So they boycotted the event. This year...
That's tough.
Yeah. No, it may do. Anyway, this year looks to be more promising. First of all, it's going to be held indoors at the L.A. Convention Center. The seminars will be scheduled at least one hour apart, which will allow producers and location scouts to come out and visit with all of us, the film commissions that are out there, vendors. And this is because, once again, the location scouts are offered the admission as part of their membership, their union membership. So we're looking forward to this expo because it has all the qualities of the ones in the past, where we've had a great success in marketing and making contacts with other location scouts and film commissions. We learn also from other film commissions. Okay. Is there anything else? Moving on, we had a merchant meeting. This was our second year of having this. This was to inform the local merchants of their rights, kind of give them some tips as to how to go about dealing, handling the location scouts when they come and meet with them. The one we had last year, the first one, was quite successful. In fact, so successful that many of them thought they had majority information. So not many attended this last year, which was about two weeks ago. So we had decided as a commission to no longer hold a big meeting any longer, because most of you have now been involved, but to any new business that comes into the downtown area to actually go and visit with them and provide them with the same information we provide at the merchant meetings. And a big thank you to the owner, for Ernie's Auto. He came out and assisted and spoke about how he has been so successful with the location scouts thus far, because they come to... I mean, you've probably seen Ernie's auto drop down around the corner, and he's had lots of commercials back home over there. He's been quite successful at handling the location scouts and doing that. Okay. If I can draw your attention to Ernie, I'm not sure if he would have obtained one. It was quite the drop in revenue for film commits this year. Last year, it was $40,150, which was great. I mean, and this all goes into the city as revenue, which really means a lot to me. And there was also, for the police service, the revenue there was $4,000, the fire service was $4,000, and the city facility rentals was $5,000. Unfortunately, this year, we took a big hit. I don't know if any of you are familiar, but there wasn't as much filming done this past year, last year, as what happened in 2010. So the permit film fees were $6,025. The police service fee was $1,697, and the fire service, $1,970. That is a huge drop. So this, I am saying, so that'll give stress the importance of when they come to Fillmore, it does gain us revenue for the city. Plus, it helps out the merchants on a bit because they... Two things. They get reimbursed for time spent for their businesses being closed or being hindered by the parking area. And secondly, the people that actually come out to film, the location scouts and all those involved, actually come and purchase from our local merchants. So it's a win-win situation. And that is why I wanted to point this out, as to the importance of us getting the location scouts down here, taking a look at our town, getting them to film things here and there. And back in 2010, we did have a good number, and it wasn't an onslaught, I would say. It was just a little bit more consistent, which was nice. And Jerry, who he loves, so that was nice. So that is... The other cause possibly is the fact that the economy's not the greatest, and they're in perfect circumstances as well. So that's the two reasons we are seeing that possibly the revenues have dropped. Yeah. That's what we needed. Okay. And we're hoping to improve the desirability of our town in many ways, and I'll get to that as to how we want to accomplish this. One of the things that should... That we have had to take a look at is the palm trees downtown. Unfortunately, Pat does a really good impression of a location scout. This... They come to our town and do this, okay? They're screaming. And they see palm trees. And in the past, they would cut them out. They would say, "Okay, we'll go ahead and cut these trees out, put them in..." Whatever it is they do, Photoshop it, I don't know. But it caused extra money to do that. It caused an extra person to do that, hours of work. So they... That is... We're seen as undesirable, unfortunately. The other thing is that it doesn't... It doesn't have that anywhere USA look. They don't have palm trees in Iowa, Ohio. They do not exist over there. Also, it sets a time span. We cannot claim to be in time, USA. So in other words, that also against us as well, because back in the '40s, early, you know, '30s, they did not exist, especially not in California at the time, and especially not in Fillmore. So we have also taken a little bit of a survey back in 2010, and met with the merchants. We went down to each and individual merchants and asked them certain questions with regards to how they felt about location scouts and thus forth. One of the questions was posed with not necessarily regards to the palm trees, but what would you feel if we put shade trees? If shade trees would be a little bit more pleasing? And most of the merchants had indicated that they've seen the ponpon's as being actually a problem, because when the winds come up here in Fillmore, they gust and ponpon's fall. They will come down, and they're afraid that one of these days, somebody's going to end up getting hit. Another thing, a nuisance would be the little seeds that fall from the trees. That's another big nuisance. So as far as the crows go for the palm trees, there's no bugger on boots. And that pretty much sums that up. So the other big issue we... When we have found, and gone out and done some more research, is that some people have the idea that they are a historical landmark, the palm trees. And we have sought some assistance through our Fillmore Historical Society, and the palm trees did not come into the downtown area of Fillmore until 1940. They had pepper trees, and they had nothing. And then the palm trees came in 1940. So far as it being a landmark, a historical type tree for Fillmore, it is not. So therefore, we are looking, and this has been an item on our agenda since before I've been on the Film Commission, and I've already been on there for years. This issue where we would like to get more location scouts down here, and we really would like to look hard into removing the palm trees, but not just desecrate, but put up perhaps trees, but the other planters. So number one, you're not worrying about roots being up lifted. Two, the merchants will have the shade they are so seeking when their people are waiting outside. For example, you know, we all go to the mall, we live, go in the stores, and our husbands are where? Outside. So at least they have somewhere some shade. Our kids, they have shade to stand out in. So that is our idea at this point, to have them removed and hopefully replace them with box trees. One of our commission members had made the suggestion to have... This is a long way in the process, by the way, everyone. Once we can find perhaps someone that has a box tree, you know, business or something, have them donate these box trees. We don't even need maybe six, I'm thinking. Have a set... Have four out there, four different trees, and have the city of Fillmore residents vote on which tree do you like? And that's the one we will pick, the one with the most votes. So that way, everyone has a say in the matter, and everybody has a choice in that. So that is what we're hoping to do. Of course, this cannot come to any cost to the city of Fillmore, obviously. So we have a tall challenge ahead of us, but we believe we can get this accomplished through some assistance, through some organizations possibly here in Fillmore, to reach out to, again, some owners of the box trees that you see on the highway. Reach out to them, reach out to have volunteers come out and assist us with this. And most importantly, whoever will be removing the palm trees will have to be licensed and insured, and we seek to hear your advice as to what would actually need to be, any regulations that maybe need to be met, see to those as well. Any... I'm not sure if anyone else owns the part of their storefront area, but either way, we would look to make sure that everything is legally, and all regulations are followed if we're doing anything. But I believe the question here is, do we have the Fillmore City Council's closing blessing on us to move forward with this challenge that we would like to see happen? To number one, hopefully bring in more location scouts, hopefully get a little more filming done so we can get some revenue in the city, because this has proven in the past to be a good source of that. So we'll be doing that tonight.
Are there any questions?
I do have a question. Do you have an estimate how much the removal of the palm trees will cost?
No, that's something that we have to look into, but there's no sense in effortly putting in our time, because we want to make sure we first have approval from the council, then we will proceed with that. If we were to go and do this without your approval first, and we have all this information, and the work gets out, we want to make sure we do this in an orderly fashion. So at this time, no, we do not. I do know Regal is looking into it for us.
I do have a question.
Oh, you do have one now? This is the one you...
(inaudible) Late breaking news.
Good evening, everyone. I did contact Belly Crest, who owns the larger nursery. An estimated cost of removing, just removing the tree, and that's cutting the palm tree down and grinding... down and grinding it down is a rough estimate of $900 per tree. I counted the amount of trees down the Central Avenue from Main Street, a couple on Main Street, and then just a little south of Main Street all the way up to Sespey. And that's a total of 26 trees to roughly a grand total of $23,400 to remove those.
And where did that go?
From just above the railroad tracks, I should say, all the way up to Sespey Avenue. And then I also checked on the rough estimate on replacing the trees with the box trees. And they're pretty expensive. They're about $800 per tree. So again, if you were to replace those 26 trees, that's roughly about 20,000, or $20,800, somewhere around that area.
You're estimating 26 trees, that replaced 26 trees?
That's correct. No, I mean, if you guys take a look at the locations and say, you know, we can leave the other six, then obviously, then those numbers will change.
Right. What is this, 800 per box tree?
That is, well, that's a rough estimate depending on what type of tree you want. But he said roughly about $800.
And that's the big ones?
Yes.
So this, these are just trees that seem...
That is correct. That is correct. I had to take off my shoes to count them, but yes. Who would have thought?
But, and the reason I should, I forgot to mention, the reason box tree, no roots going above ground, and also they can be moved if necessary, if they're going around. So, and I'm thinking, like I said, I'm thinking six maybe. I don't, I don't, you have to request every single palm tree. Palm trees are very thin, box trees are not.
Somebody ask if there's any, anybody in the public who would like to comment on this item? No comments? Okay. I do have a question for Kevin, if you don't mind. Are there any issues that you knew of as far as zoning or height or...
No, it has nothing to do with zoning. It's a street tree designation. I would probably follow the downtown specific plan on whatever tree designated there. If it's a different tree that's designated, we can change the plan. So it's flexible. Or even have no tree.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other comments or questions?
Well, I would like to see a plan
A phased?
From you guys and how can we raise this money?
Right.
Are we hoping to get volunteers for...
And I believe that we probably can do it together, but even if we remove right now the trees and then we wait a little bit to make another fundraising to, to put it on the trees, and maybe we can talk to some donations to some of these larger companies that they have those trees, which I believe that they might. Even if we put a little plaque over there, donated by, that's not a problem, that's a subtile in my book. But we need to remove those trees and, I mean, think about it. The removal of these trees is 50% of the revenue that we had in the film in 2010. So as far as I'm concerned, it is a must do right now. And, and, and we need to find a way to remove that. And I would like to, I personally would like to see a plan from you guys to see how can we do this.
Right. Well, hopefully, everybody agrees with the good idea, we can then move forward because some of the other ideas that came up were to actually uproot them and then perhaps somebody would want to buy them. That was one of our plans. However, the roots of a palm tree are quite large on the bottom and it would end up resurfacing the street and the sidewalk. So that is not a doable venture. Because we had thought of, how can we actually even make money out of this? That's, that's out of the question. If they just have to come down. So, the whole point is, we had had some citizens concerned about the historical value of the trees. And that is why before we move forward on this, we want to make sure that everyone approves of the actual act of removing them and that we don't ruffle any feathers, if you will. And then we can proceed forward with fine tuning all this.
Mayor?
Yes?
I don't have a microphone, but hopefully people can hear me. I'm, I'm in favor of the plan at a conceptual level. I think there's still some, some missing components to it. One, right now, with the palm trees, you don't have the foliage blocking the storefronts where with box trees, more than likely, they would block the storefronts and the advertising. So that probably needs to be incorporated into your concept here. Second, we lose valuable real estate on our sidewalk because the square footage needed for a box tree is much greater than, than the space now used by the palm tree. And from a public safety point of view, sometimes we do get wind, so those box trees have to be anchored down or bolted down somehow, I would think.
Right, that's a definite...
Public works will look into that or engineering or safety. And lastly, in the past, we have had film companies that have offered to remove the trees and pay for it. But you could consult our previous Film Commission person liaison that did work with the producers on that, that believe you have offers from Film Commission companies that pay for it. Yeah, so just, you can run that down the ground, but just to let you know, Mayor, I do support the conceptual plan being brought forward. Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
My only question was for the city manager. She would know if we have to purchase a protective liability policy with respect to removal.
Well, I think it depends on who does it. We would require them to sign waivers and all that other stuff, like we normally do. But I think for something like this, to have a professional corporation do it would be the best way to approach it.
Would you like to make a comment?
Yes.
Would you come up to the podium, please?
Well, I was just...
Could you state your name?
My name is Arith Mopera. I'm at the Alcoa Water Estates. That's another issue. As far as the ecology of the land, I know that, okay, the palm tree is not indigenous to this area, but it's already a part of the landscape and it is a living thing. And trees are very important to our planet. And I was wondering, unless I, maybe I didn't hear everything, why you would think in terms of, you know, taking them away? And also, if you were, why you wouldn't at least replant them someplace else? Because you're, to me, you're taking away from what we already have on this planet.
Sure, okay. To address the first question as to why, I'll go back and state, we have asked the merchants up and down and also because of, to obtain more revenue, the location scouts have indicated that they are definitely in the way and we are not any town, USA, nor are we in time, USA. So to obtain more revenue and draw location scouts is one. The second is because merchants have indicated that the palm puns, when they fall, they have actually almost hit people. And you don't want that on your head when they fall. I happen to have a palm tree in my backyard. And when I tell you my dog, my fur dog, has gotten hit by them, it's, you know, it's not the most pleasant thing that can happen. So the other reason is, with regards to uprooting them, like I mentioned, we had considered uprooting and selling the palm trees to someone who might enjoy them in their area. However, the root of a palm tree is a big ball. And if we should try and re, excavate it, if you will, it would entail cracking the sidewalk, cracking the street. So that is not an option for the, that reason. And we had, like I said, once again, we had considered that, to doing it that way. Again, this has been an item on the Film Commission since before I was on. And I've been on the Film Commission for three years. With regards to the, again, the historical value, there is none. And that is why we also wanted to replace them with another tree. So that way, we are trying to give Fillmore some more shade and actually have some greenery and beautify the city, the downtown area. So I hope that answered your question?
Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to come up to the podium, state your name, please?
I'm just, I'm interested. Are you, are you considering taking out the Egyptian palms that are right here?
Just the 300 block of Central Avenue. Which is, like Regal was saying, from about the railroad tracks to Sespey Avenue. That's it. And that's the little thing that the location scouts do. That's the area they're interested in. And, you know, just to throw this kind of out, Santa Paula has been getting a good number of commercials. And also some shows that have been going down there. And reason being is, it's what they don't have. Don't have palm trees. They can, yes, they, they can be anything to these location scouts, these producers. They can be anything they may come out to be. And, you know, this wouldn't even be such a big issue, I don't think. It's just that we saw the capability, the revenue that can be generated from these film permits. And our town needs revenue. So this is one reason to kind of really bring this to the surface and get something done for that reason alone. We need to up our economy.
Okay.
Just a, very much. Good example of that is in 2003, we had a revenue of close to $70,000. So there is a promising future with that. 2010, 2011 were not too bad, but I think we could do a lot better. I think this is a stepping stone, but this has been an issue in hiding that, in my opinion, should have been handled long ago. But I'm glad it's finally at the doorstep, so it's, we can play after. Thank you.
I have a question. In those numbers that you're saying, it's only for, for income for the city, not, not counting the...
Not counting the rentals, not counting the merchants, not counting the fire, not counting the police, it's just film permits alone. On that green sheet that you have there?
Okay. Well, I, I will say, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
You'd like to say yourself last.
Okay.
I want to thank Film Commission for taking the lead on this. You asked them to do so a couple of years ago. And they take it seriously. And with the public that has seen it, they provide some nice historic pictures of Fillmore. From that 1887, there's no palm trees. There's not too many trees, period. One from 1890, there is not a tree in sight, you know? So Fillmore's been very tree-friendly. And we planted a lot and there's some trees being planted through Chevron, through the, sort of the rebirth of that super site. And, and, yeah, so we, we are, we are tree-friendly. However, in this case, what we're noticing, my opinion is that it was, in hindsight, palm trees shouldn't have been planted in downtown, okay? And that's what we're just trying to remedy. And, and we can't afford any of it with their own ways and their own research, those ways. Because we can't, we don't even have the staff to research it. But we have, this is what volunteers and the volunteer Film Commission are looking into. I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right. And I'll, I'll go on the record as being in support of, of your plan, whatever, however it comes out to be. And just, just as a background, you know, the economic base of Fillmore historically was always agriculture and oil. And those economic bases are disappearing. And they don't have a lot left, tourism and filming. I don't know that they'll fill the gap, but I think that's, those are items that we, we should and could work on to help our economic base. And, you know, we're desperate. But that, I think, it, so I'm in support of...
Would this require a motion?
No, I think they're going to work on the plan.
No, we're not actually seeking a motion or anything. We just wanted to make sure we had the council's stamp of approval on this before we proceed further anymore. And we're going to begin asking questions. We wanted to make sure the public was aware. This is what we would like to do. It's out there in the public now. And this is why we brought it to you first. Because if we start asking questions, this basically system where people start talking, you know, "Oh, my gosh, the trees, this and this." So we're basing it head-on, if you will. And then so now, I personally feel more comfortable and I think the rest of my Film Commissioners also feel more comfortable in, okay, let's start pursuing this, let's start asking. Let's now approach organizations for assistance. Now we can do that because it's now become open to the public. So that's what we're really seeking to do at this time. Just get an approval of the idea so that way we can proceed.
Okay. And I, I would ask that, could, could you maybe come up with, what, with a plan, say, say maybe three at a time, five at a time, and give us a, like a timeline?
Right, we could report to you. Actually, we could come and report to you at your, your meetings. We don't have to have a joint meeting, I don't believe.
No, just keep it to the...
Right. And the thing, like Mr. Gonzalez was saying, $23,000, you're not lucky. And if anything, we would pursue that first, hopefully to build up some revenue with more filming being done. And maybe perhaps that revenue can purchase the box trees. I'm like, this is a donation idea, though. I like that idea. But now we can get that worked out.
Okay. Any other comments from the council?
Okay, okay. Well, we are now done with our agenda of Film Commission business items. So does anybody have a motion to adjourn? And I have a second. All is in favor? Fine. Okay, we are adjourned.
All right, thank you. And we're going to take about a five-minute recess so we can get the dais reorganized. Thank you. All right, everybody, we're going to call the meeting back to order at 7:56. And the next item on our agenda is the consent calendar. And I don't entertain any questions.
Mayor, I'd like to absolutely, full item E. And for clarification, I will be extending from item E as an absentee vote.
Okay. So we have a motion for item A, B, C, D, with Councilwoman Conway. Okay, I'm not, this is a voice vote. Councilwoman Conway?
Yes.
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 All right. Okay, and so pulling item E?
Yeah, just pulling it and requesting this voice vote.
Okay. All right. And I will say, this is RFQ for Attorney Services and this is in preparation for our next year's budget. And I want to let everybody know that this does not have anything to do with our current legal services, which have been, been conducted very well. So I want to make sure everybody understands that. So we'll proceed with a voice vote for item 90. Councilwoman Conway?
Yes. Yes, ma'am.
Of course.
I will be voting yes due to the issue of a RFQ has not been conducted in the last 20-plus years. Thank you.
Yes.
All right, motion passes forward. All right, now, we're going to move on to item 10A. This is a public hearing. This is the Planning Commission's recognition to approve the best intended tract map of This is the reason why everybody's smart tonight. Are you presenting the document, Ms. Speaker?
Good evening, councilmembers.
Good evening, councilmembers, members of the public. My name is Charmaine Beuner. I'm the Assistant City Attorney for Fillmore. I'm presenting to you tonight the proposed conversion of El Dorado Mobile Home Park. And before I get started, okay.
West.
Mr. Westman is passing out. I'm about to give a PowerPoint presentation. And Mr. West, I've made some copies for those of you who can't see the screen. So I don't know that I have enough copies for everyone, but we can always send you one if you're interested. So this project, this project, which was initially submitted to the city as an application to consider the project, was submitted to the city in early 2009. The project is to convert the existing mobile home park at El Dorado Estates from a landlord-owned park to a resident-owned park, which will, in effect, make the park into 302 individual lots and one common space from a single lot. The project does not propose an expansion, change of use, or new construction. So it's simply redrawing the lines on the map. At issue at our last council meeting, which was December of 2010, it came up that the park was a senior mobile home park restricted to those who are 55 years of age and older. The fact has changed because El Dorado has exercised their right under statute, which allows them to lift that age restriction. So I indicated that as a footnote, really, to what this proposed conversion project is about. Now, the scope of the council's authority to review these projects, which are conducted pursuant to Government Code Section 66427.5, is restrictive. Now, cities all over the state have been litigating this very issue and losing. So unfortunately, the city's authority is restricted to the six items that are set forth in the statute. And then interpreting case law comes out and says, the legislature said something and they meant it. So cities, you must follow just what's in the statute. So as we've considered, or we've put this project and the application before the city to consider this project, we've looked at, is there anything else the city needs to look at other than 66427.5 and all of the opinions that flow from that statute? And sometimes there are. And in fact, we've considered some of those things, as you may recall, under CEQA, whether there were unusual circumstances such that it would have an environmental impact as a result of the conversion. We also looked at some federal law issues. So what's pending now and what's different from the last time we stood before you is that we've had several court opinions followed from El Dorado suing the city of Fillmore. And then also other case law has been coming out to inform our decision. So it's somewhat of a moving target for us to comply with this statute and ensure that we're following the law and doing what's right for the city and being protective of the residents. So right now, there's a matter pending, the issue whether a city can consider CEQA in conjunction with these projects before the Supreme Court of California. And there's no telling when that opinion can come out. But it's out there as an open question. Okay. So I just wanted to take you briefly through what's really been thousands and thousands of pages of paper, hundreds of hours of time in this single page, which is the history of this conversion project before the city. So like I mentioned, in 2009, El Dorado submitted an application in which they said they wanted the city to consider this project. The city in El Dorado went around and around because the city said, El Dorado, your project application is not complete. You haven't submitted everything we need to make this land use decision. El Dorado sued, and fortunately, the court agreed with us in that circumstance. We won that case because El Dorado did not comply with the precise requirements set forth in 66427.5. Now, at the time, the city also was looking outside the statute and making arguments, saying, you know, it's arguable that we can consider these other things. But at that juncture, the court came back and said, well, El Dorado has to comply with 66427.5, but the city really needs to look at just the statute. So that was round one of litigation. After that, El Dorado complied with the statute. I stood before you in December of 2010, and we looked at each item of the statute, which I'll go through with you in a moment. And we determined that El Dorado had checked the boxes, the six items or five items that they needed to comply with. But at that time, we were also looking at FEMA requirements. The city has ordinances which impose flood mitigation measures pursuant to FEMA. Now, the reason why we thought we could do that is because federal law trumps state law. Right? So we thought that is a legitimate requirement we can impose to make sure that we protected the welfare and safety of the residents. Additionally, several of the residents got up before you and talked about something that was going to flow from the conversion, which was they felt that the age restriction at the park was going to be lifted. Now, we looked at that. The city council considered that and thought, well, if the age restriction is lifted as a result of the conversion, that will likely have environmental impact because of the changing demographics at the park, there might be new school requirements and the like. So the city approved the project subject to the conditions that El Dorado complied with FEMA and CEQUAs. Well, not surprisingly, the next day, or within a few days of that decision, El Dorado sued again. And this time, the court came back and decided that, and this is in state court, and the court said, the city cannot consider FEMA because those are really local regulations. And 66427.5 says you cannot consider local regulations. But the court also said, but as to CEQA, if there is an issue, if there are unusual circumstances associated with that conversion project, the city may consider CEQA. So that was a victory as well. Okay. So concurrently with that decision, El Dorado, as some of you may recall, would not respond to multiple questions by the council, by the city staff, by my office, about what they intended to do with respect to the age restriction at the park. So El Dorado also implied that the city was violating the Fair Housing Act by even acquiring into the age status of the park. So not surprisingly, El Dorado sued again. This time, they sued in federal court. And, excuse me for a second. So El Dorado sued in the central district of California and said that the city had violated the Fair Housing Rights Act, violated the Fair Housing Act by discriminating against families with children. We filed a motion to have that whole lawsuit thrown out, which fortunately, the judge agreed with us and threw it out. However, in a comment, in a paragraph of that nine-page opinion, which is attached to the staff report, the judge also said, part of the reason why it wasn't willing to give El Dorado any relief was because El Dorado had, within its own power at all times, to lift the age restriction without asking the city for permission to do so. The weird thing about when that opinion issued is that El Dorado had, several months before, sent a letter to the park residents pursuant to its statutory authority to do so, lifted the park's age restriction. So we won, but then we have this doubt that the federal court cast on the city's ability to impose CEQA when it said, El Dorado has the power to destroy the causal link between the conversion project and the age restriction to then impose CEQA. Okay? So it was just a comment by the federal judge, but something that is, something that's to consider in the case of continued litigation. So here we are. We are before the council again. El Dorado has submitted its project or approval, conditional approval or denial, which is what the statute says. We have Judge Bish in state court saying the city may consider CEQA. We have a Supreme Court of California that is about to decide whether that can be done in the first instance. We have the federal court casting doubt on the city's ability to consider CEQA. And we have a couple hundred thousand dollars in legal fees from the litigation that's already under the bridge, with a promise from El Dorado, I received a call from them this morning, assuring the city that it would be lawful litigation with El Dorado for the foreseeable future if we didn't find a way to resolve this. And Yvonne, I know that you had, did you have the figures in mind for the cost that this El Dorado litigation, how it's reimbursed?
Yes, it's about $236,000.
So $236,000 to date. Now, listening to the Film Commission talk about the retrieve removal and the dollars involved there, it's a concern for how the city would fund future litigation. So what we have, though, is an argument, whether CEQA could still be imposed. It may not be a successful argument ultimately, but if the matter is not resolved, we know that we will be spending hundreds of thousand dollars or more in continued litigation. So just real quickly, these are the requirements of the conversion statute. And they've all been pursuant to our staff report in December 14, 2010. El Dorado has complied with each of these with the exception of number six, which is a condition of approval. Okay. So after months of, years of litigation with El Dorado, this is what El Dorado has said is acceptable to them for dismissing all of the litigation if the city agrees to these terms. So I'll just take you through them. The first is a resolution to approve the conversion of the project, finding it exempt from CEQA.
Could you stop there and answer a question? Could you explain to the public what CEQA is?
Oh, yes. Thank you for asking that question. CEQA is the California Environmental Quality Act. It is a very powerful state law. And when there is a land use decision made by a municipal body, and that land use decision has a significant environmental impact, the city or municipal body considering that decision must follow the requirements of CEQA. And that usually involves having a preliminary study done to look at the impacts. And then the result of that study, usually a couple of different things happen. If there are things that have to be done, then usually the applicant will have to pay for those. It can be determined that there is no significant impact, so nothing has to be done. Or the city, and there's like a middle ground where, and help me out, Ted, what's the?
Well, typically, the results of the initial study would dictate whether there would be a mitigated negative declaration, a negative declaration, or a full-blown environmental impact report, where all the impacts are studied and then what's developed is what's called a mitigation monitoring plan. And all the impacts have to be mitigated to less than significant. And if that can't be done, then what I think you're referring to is the city and the applicant would come up with a statement of overriding considerations where they would approve the project notwithstanding the existence of significant environmental impacts that cannot be mitigated.
And so Ted's the CEQA guy. I was trying to use the layman's terms for CEQA. I'm the court person, so I'm usually laying these matters. But essentially, it means, are there environmental problems you have to fix? Then fix them. There are no environmental problems, you don't have to fix anything. Or the middle of the road, we're going to decide on what can allay these concerns. So that's essentially what CEQA is. We, in December 2010, as you'll recall, said that, well, if El Dorado is converting this park to a resident-owned park with the purpose of lifting the age restriction, then that would have significant, that might have significant environmental impact. Does that answer your question?
I already have the answer.
Oh, well.
I think that answers the question to the audience.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you for that. So here we are, as I was saying. These are the proposed settlement terms that El Dorado indicates is acceptable to end the litigation. And also, hopefully provides some measure of protection to the residents. I'm sure we'll hear from the residents and what they think, but this is what's on the table. The city adopts the resolution approving the conversion, finding it exempt from CEQA in accord with the city's recommendation. Because it's an existing facility, there's no change to the construction. El Dorado provides 10% rent credit to low and very low-income households, but it cannot apply to any more than 15% of the residents. And the residents who apply for the credit must do so annually and also apply for Section 8 housing. Independent of the credit, the park owners say that they will offer five-year leases to all existing residents in accord with the CPI, subject to a floor of 3% and not to exceed 8%. The settlement becomes effective upon the final recordation of the map. Or the recordation of the final map, El Dorado dismisses all litigation and pays the city $17,500 to defray some of the costs associated with just the conversion project. In no event would we get our attorney's fees back for the litigation. So apart from that, I also encourage and will continue to encourage El Dorado to engage in a dialogue with the residents about these terms and about the ongoing conditions at the park. They indicated they may be amenable to that, but they wanted to address these settlement terms and get the opinion or the final decision from the council. So with that, our recommendation is to set aside the prior resolutions, 10-3274, that conditionally approved the project, adopt the current resolution that's attached to the staff report that approves the project with conversion statute conditions, and approve the settlement agreement. Are there any other questions?
Any questions for Ms. Peter? Go ahead.
Just to have some clarification. As a city, we have never required not to change the age, right? Have we?
Right.
Because we don't have authority to even to request that.
Well, what the city cannot do if the park owner decides to lift the age restriction, the city, they do not have to ask for permission. We cannot condition it. There's nothing we can do, which was what was part of the problem, to put it kindly, with their federal court lawsuit.
Now, with regards to CEQA, and I somehow didn't have this clear before today, but it says that the Supreme Court is waiting to make a decision on whether we can impose CEQA?
Not the city directly. It's actually a case called Pacific Palisades, and I can get you the site to that case. In that case, it was a little different because the court was considering whether it could impose conditions under the Coastal Act. And I believe there was one other act concerned. It was a very similar situation. And in that case, the appellate court, you know, there goes trial court, appellate court, Supreme Court. And in that case, the appellate court came out in the favor of the city and said, absolutely, you have to consider the Coastal Act. And so we thought, great, that's our authority. We can impose CEQA. And then just before our last council meeting, actually, it's just before the Planning Commission meeting, the Supreme Court de-published the opinion, which means we cannot rely on it. We can't cite to it. We can't point a state court judge to it.
Until they make a decision.
Until they make a decision, which could go either way.
Are there any other cases like this the Supreme Court has gone either way? Not specific like this one, but. Not specific like this one, but any other ones?
In this context?
Yes.
Well, that's the only case, to my knowledge, that's honorable by the Supreme Court considering the conversion statute, 66427.5. There are a multitude of other cases, 2006, 2009, 2010, another one that came out just around the time of Pacific Palisades that confirmed the restrictive issues that may be considered by the city council. So that's the only one that went in our favor that's kept me relied upon by city.
Now, and my understanding, it's my understanding that we actually have got, win the case twice in the federal court.
State court.
State court twice and a kind of iffy in the federal court.
Well, no, yeah, yeah, they weren't iffy victories. I think if Eldorado were here, they would probably argue somehow that they were in their favor, but no, they filed for a writ twice in the state court and both times were denied. And then they filed a lawsuit in federal court. And before you'd even got past what's called the pleading stage, the very initial stages, which is pretty hard to get a lawsuit dismissed, the federal court threw it out. My comment about what he said in the opinion, he didn't even have to say, but he related his view, Judge Otero, that if Eldorado had its power to lift the age restriction, it could remove the causal link. It's not, I mean, I'm sure if this litigation were to continue, that Eldorado would cite that front and center in their brief. It's an argument.
But that's not an argument for all of CEQA. It's just for the ages.
Well, it was a comment that Judge Otero made about CEQA.
Okay, his comment about, he quoted CEQA of the environmental impacts about the age, specifically about changing the age restriction.
Well, the issue in that case, if I can, the issue in that case was whether the city was using CEQA as a pretext to discriminate against families with children.
Okay.
Okay. And so Judge Otero said, no, Eldorado, you have it within your power to remove the age restriction issue. So I'm not going to help you out because if you did so, there would be no causal link in the first instance. Basically, you have it, you come to me with a problem of your own making.
Did it go further?
It's about a paragraph in the opinion, if you'd like, I can.
No, the point is, it's speaking specifically about our power to restrict the age requirement.
Well, so.
Or we could, I know. Let me finish this thing. And he's saying we don't have that power, that Eldorado at any point could have changed it, which they had already done.
Months earlier.
Okay, so his comment about CEQA is specific to the age issue, is it not?
Yes, in that.
That's what I'm asking. I'm not asking whether or not, I get that, okay, but because when I consider this, I'm going to consider whether or not we consider CEQA and it won't be based on age. See what I'm saying? It'll be based on other environmental impacts if, you know, depends on how much information's given to us and we have to make a decision. But I get it, we can't make any kind of decisions based on age, I understand that.
Well, even further than that, the statute at 66427.5 outlines, it's really kind of a check-the-box, I mean, there's some discretion to make sure that Eldorado complied with the statute, but that would be the.
Safe issues.
Well, that would be the safe route in terms of doing what the law comply, what the law requires and the unknown issues, such as what the Supreme Court's going to do, what Judge Bish would do if CEQA actually became a factor as a part of this, what Eldorado would do and how many runs they would sue on and how the city would pay for it, all those other issues that I've touched upon.
Thank you.
I do have a couple of questions, please. On page 69 of the staff report. My imagination is different than yours. If you could tell me what exhibit you're looking at? It's the actual staff report and it's page nine of the staff. Page nine. The 10th row. Thank you. The top paragraph, at the top of page nine. Refers to a list of questions that the HOA would like posed to the applicant at the Do we know what the status of those questions are?
I recall getting those questions.
These were questions?
Yeah, these were the questions that in December 2010. Well, these were questions that I believe my office received from the residents and wanted them addressed at the hearing. If my recollection serves correctly, I believe we discussed those in the last address. Yes.
Okay. And then my other question is on page 70, item one, do you have that one?
Yes, I do.
There's reference to an appraisal of market rents. Did we ever get that?
I believe, let's see, oh, no. This is subsection F of Government Code, section 66427.5, which is something to be done post-conversion. So it's a condition of approval.
Okay, got you. Are there any other questions?
If it's a condition of approval, have we received that then yet? I think the answer is no.
Not yet, because Eldorado would wait to see what the council's decision was with respect to the approval, whether, before they approved the conditions.
And the cost for this appraisal is being paid by?
Eldorado.
That would not be part of the settlement?
That's what they're required to.
Just to be clear.
Yeah, that's a great question.
You know, it's an excellent question. They, Eldorado is obligated to comply with the statute post-conversion, completely at their own expense.
And does that appraisal go to staff?
I'm sure we could request a copy.
Okay. I would be interested to see that. Go ahead.
On page 69, page nine of the staff report, on top of the page, it says that, given that more than 88% of the residents who responded to the survey opposed the proposed conversion, and the number of residents who responded to the opposition to the proposed conversion comprises of 64% of the 302 spaces, is that concerning the two surveys that were given to them or is this just the one survey? Because I believe there's two questions.
You're right. Well, there were two surveys, and this was part of the reason we won round one of litigation. Eldorado conducted a survey, but it was not in compliance with what the statute required. So we, after we had that court victory, we went back to Eldorado and said, you must conduct a second survey. And I believe this paragraph refers to that second survey that was conducted.
Do you know for the original survey, the first survey, what was the tally?
I don't have that. No, and in part, it's because we said that that survey didn't count because it wasn't conducted.
Yeah, I understand that. I still would like to have some information on that because it is still the will of the people.
Absolutely. In fact, I have that information. I would expect, at least from my recollection, that it was somewhere in the neighborhood of the residents that got it and responded, somewhere around these percentages.
All right, thank you. So we're going to move on. This is a public hearing, and I have several speaker cards. And I'll ask that, try to confine your comments within three to five minutes, so, because there are quite a few. My first speaker is Mr. Charles Richardson.
I turn on everybody. I got the first speaker. Mayor Warren, City Council Manager, City Manager, Mrs. Warren, City Attorney, Ted Schneider. And I want to specifically mention Charmaine Berman. She represented the city at the two hearings that my wife and I attended extraordinarily well. You would have been very proud to have her as your representative arguing the case for the city. And obviously, she did an outstanding job because, as she pointed out, and I'll pull to you, city is commanded to decide whether to approve, conditionally approve, or deny Eldorado's conversion project in accordance with this court's statement of decision dated October 20, 2011. You're declaring, you can deny. Judge Bishy's ruling on October 20th, where he ruled that the city of Fillmore does indeed, well, I've skipped it. Now, if I had a cover prompter in front of me, I would do what our president does, but unfortunately, we can't afford one, so I have to read my statement. And it's going to take a little longer than five minutes, and you have a couple of cards there that give me that extra time. Think I'm nervous now. Jeez, we think I've never been on a console. Fillmore does indeed have jurisdiction to rule where owners of Eldorado's park request to turn their rental park into a condominium-type facility. As you know, the owner of Eldorado sued the city back in 2009, and the city approved with conditions the conversion process of rental to ownership of each of the 300 sites. The owners claim the city did not have authority to deny their land subdivision request and did not have authority to impose conditions to the city's approval. However, your approval was granted with conditions. Those conditions were concerning a host of environmental issues covered under the California Environmental Quality Act 1974. Judge Bishy agreed with the city in his ruling. It states, in fact, the city can mandate that the owners address the various environmental conditions which will come about if this conversion project proceeds. We here tonight want to make sure that you indeed do uphold the numerous environmental concerns which have been presented by your planning commission and continue to require that the owner of Eldorado Mobile Home Park do indeed address those concerns as stipulated in the California Environmental Act passed by the state in the 1970s. Do you recall Mayor Washburn attending a park residence meeting in our clubhouse? Were you advised that the attendees write a letter to the state suggesting that a CEQA review be required by the owners? Instead of 300 letters, I was advised by Mr. Schneider's office that a petition may be a better way to go. And so in a very short while, before the August 22 meeting at the courthouse, I collected a bunch of signatures, over 100, individuals, people, not two people per site, one person This petition was used during court proceedings and presented by our city attorney, Charmaine Berman, to Judge Bishy. He obviously agreed with her outstanding presentation. I'm a little disappointed in her presentation tonight. Therefore, please continue to request of the owners that they prepare an environmental impact report, that this report has to be completed by the owners and they have to say to our, to your satisfaction, how they plan on mitigating such issues as parking. Do you realize that with the owners' new rules and regulations handed out to us on November 1, 2011, and given to everybody in the Eldorado family, that they changed to a family park, and that up to seven people can live in my house, five in a two-bedroom house, I have a three-bedroom house? Now, say for instance, that those seven people are all adults. Where are they going to park those cars? That's an environmental concern and should be addressed and mitigated. One of the suggestions at the meeting that we, a number of us attended, by the park manager, said we should park at Barnes. How area? Traffic control, most of the time, the stop signs in the park are not secured to. Ingress egress from the only exit in the park, a signal is required and should be installed by the owners at their expense. Playground and recreational areas, with the exception of the clubhouse and spa and pool non-existent. Infrastructure adequateness, old gas lines, cable, telephone, wire and sewer, we're going to be responsible for that now. The owner's responsible. And to show that responsibility, the owner, in fact, changed the electrical system the last couple of months, put in new stuff. We didn't have to pay for that because the owner had been receiving since the 70s, when they built this park, $25 a month from the gas and electric company combined from all 300-plus sites. That's a lot of money due to man. So they had the money to put in the new infrastructure for electrical. They should have to be required to look at all of the rest of the infrastructure. Streetlights, sidewalks, the redistribution of discounts, how are they going to be handled? There are probably more issues that need adjusting, but you get the idea, and EIR is definitely needed. Yeah, I'll get to it later. However, let me get to what we residents really want, and that is to urge you to adopt Judge Bishy's third option, and that is simply to deny this project. The majority of the residents at Eldorado and those of attendants here tonight strongly suggest this denial option. Sandy Kova, the former HOA president, who will speak to you tonight and shall comment on the survey you were just talking about, backing up my denial statement. Why should you subject yourself to any more meetings about this topic, which has been going on now, as you know, for three years, plus the eight closed session meetings you've had this year? You do not owe these owners anything, but they certainly owe you. They owe the city, and the owners should be responsible for subject, for having to pay, the city, to having to pay the court costs, attorney fees to litigate this issue. The owners should have to pay back to the city those costs the city incurred for the efforts to defend itself during these litigation proceedings. You are in the driver's seat. Don't let them bully you like they have been doing. I had been here when the guy stood up in front of you and waved his finger at each one of you and said, I'm going to sue you. He didn't swear, but you know what he meant. And after all, they've lost twice, three times, now I missed the one, but I was at the two, I was at the hearing where the judge took Charmaine's input, and she convinced him that the owners do, that the residents do have a say and will be impacted. The owners have already done us wrong by making a park a family park on November 1st. Don't let them do this again to us again by jacking up the sales prices of anywhere from $50,000 to $100,000. And that's not just a figure out of my imagination. My wife and I did a little survey, Santa Paula, Small Mobile Home Park in, not Santa Paula, Fillmore, Ventura County. When they received approval to go to condominium family park, and they were selling two years ago at $100,000 for the site, not for the house. Can you imagine having to add another $50,000 to $100,000 to houses that are being given away? That's what's happening today. They're getting $5,000, $10,000 maybe for houses that the owners have taken back. They're getting $5,000, $10,000 maybe for houses that the owners have taken back, and now they rent those houses because they changed the agreement form to read, "You can now..."
Sublet.
Yeah, pardon?
Sublet.
Imagine that? Who benefits from subletting, except the owners who own all these buildings that they can't sell? Before, 11-1, you couldn't sublet. One renter, one space, now you can sublet. That only benefits the owners. You are to be commended for your unwavering persistence in not allowing the owners of El Dorado to try and bully you, to do something you did not have to do in the first place. You didn't want to do it either. Judge Visi's ruling was, has vindicated your position. You can make a lot of people happy tonight by denying this project. What's your emotion to deny? A second and then a 5-0 vote to deny this project. Thanks for listening and showing us that you do care about us, seniors.
Thank you. Alice Green was...
I was there.
Okay, and Kathy?
Yes, that was different.
Okay, and Gordon Eastman? Oh, and then I have a card for Karen Bergen.
It is 02.
Okay, and Sandu Hella. Thank you all for donating your time to Mr. [inaudible].
Yes, I've already been introduced, I haven't been up here yet. My name is Sandy Hella, so I add El Dorado space 308. Mayor Washburn, distinguished city council members, city attorneys, thank you for your time. I'm here tonight to urge you to consider your long-range results of your decision concerning the owner's subdivision map application. I believe that I am representing the consensus of the majority of the homeowners at El Dorado. We are overwhelmingly opposed to this project. As Charles commented, a couple of years ago, we did do a survey of the residents, and out of the 221 responses that were turned in, well, there six were invalid, but it was, it was over 80, it was 88% of those individuals opposed it. If we were to do a survey tomorrow, I guarantee you the results would be very similar because the feeling hasn't changed there. I am personally aware of your efforts and to support the welfare of the residents in El Dorado and the tremendous cost of litigating this case. Regardless of your decision, I am personally very grateful to each one of you. The most favorable decision, of course, as Charles commented, would be for you to deny. But if you can accomplish that, I urge you to approve with conditions and to impose CEQA requirements. There are environmental and safety concerns regarding approval of this project. Just since the park was converted to an all-age park in November 2011, parking issues already exist. I have seen cars parked on the narrow streets overnight, which inhibits access of emergency responders in an emergency. Children have no safe area to play within the park, and we are right on Highway 126. That is an accident waiting to happen, and I'm concerned about the welfare of the children. When the new park rules were imposed at the beginning of the year, these concerns and others were addressed with Maxurillo at a meeting, and with the consensus that we could perhaps resolve some of these issues so that there wouldn't be so many concerns, later we received a letter saying that there would be no changes to the written statement, and they would, the rules would go in exactly as they were written. This blatant disregard for the health, safety, and quality of life in El Dorado is unconscionable. We have no voice with this owner, so our current and future welfare still resides with you. Thank you for hearing us and for considering our concerns.
Okay, cancel discussion. Are there any questions or comments? Hi, I'm... Please come up to the podium.
I was giving you a slip paper that a party who could be here tonight asked me to read this letter to you. It's Gordon Eastman. He lives in space number 238. It says, it's dated May 2nd, 2012. Free city council hearing Tuesday, May 8, 2012. Dear city council members, I am disabled senior citizen living in the El Dorado Mobile Home Estates here in Fillmore, and because of my disability, I am not able to attend this special hearing. However, I wish to express my feeling and would vote against the condominium conversion project here at the El Dorado park. Please know the hardships it would put on me and senior citizens on a fixed income. This would be a grave injustice if this would go into effect as a condominium conversion. Thank you in advance for considering my request. Sincerely, Gordon Eastman.
All right, thank you. I'd like to ask staff, either Chad or Kevin, to address a couple of the issues that were brought up. Would be the best one.
I don't know, I'd be happy to.
Well, I wanted some discussion of the parking playground and what ability we have to... I think, didn't the courts already rule that we can't address those items?
Well, what the court ruled was that we could consider CEQA impacts in connection with the lifting of the age restriction as part of the conversion. They've already lifted the age restriction, so it's no longer part of the conversion. So all those other impacts that you're referring to, parking and the playgrounds, arguably, arguably, are no longer before you because they have, El Dorado has decoupled the conversion from the age restriction. So there would be, we'd sell an argument, but it is an argument, and it would be a very expensive one.
Do you want to speak first?
Yeah, I guess to get things moving along, first, I appreciate everybody coming out tonight. This has been a topic that, as you well know, been on the table for a long time for everybody. There's been a lot of uncertainty in your lives because of this eventual potential change. Prior to the legal cases, we had the rent control issue going back from 2006 to 2008. You remember back then, many of you sat in this very audience while we worked through that issue or attempted to work through that issue. We thought we had some success. Arguably, looking back on it, it was probably no great benefit to the residents in anything that would have been writing. Since day one, though, here's the things that we've heard. I've heard since taking the council, when this all-day board in 2006 was, the cost of rent was an issue. Quality of life issues were paramount, and when I mention the quality of life issues, I'll put it to you this way. I love my grandkids, and someday, maybe I'd be happy with them living next to me. Unfortunately, I probably wouldn't be as happy with all of your grandkids living right next door to me. I get it. I understand that at this phase of life, you're looking for tranquility, peace, and, you know, family on their terms, and then you could get the road. Those two things were really important. We heard them many, many times. Rent control, quality of life issues. As we've heard tonight, some of those issues are outside of our ability to even control or to weigh in on, especially given the circumstances and what's taken place. The city, and I think there's probably been some unrealistic expectations placed on the city, thinking the city could intervene in the relationship of landlord DC and having to do with this conversion. As we heard tonight, the city has no jurisdiction to weigh in or stop the conversion to an all-age park or a family park. That is one of your first quality of life changes. It's already taken place, as several commentators mentioned tonight. The city has no way of intervening or walking that back or changing that to CEQA. It is what it is, and it'll probably continue to change as things go forward. Early on, we heard that property values, the coach values were close to nothing because nobody wanted to move to the park, and I understood that, having done research and reading papers and things like that. When parks do convert, if you are a current coach owner, there are people that can't afford to buy a house on Central Avenue or anywhere else in town, but they can't afford to buy a mobile home. So that becomes an offering to them. And with that comes, from the ownership of a mobile home, potential equity. So for those that were looking to realize a windfall, and some of the people that we dealt with in 2006 through 2007, having, that was their concern, could potentially stand to have a windfall as this whole process moves forward. Their coach has more value now because it's opened up to more people in the market, regardless if you like it or not, I understand. That said, the issue of rent control came forward in the past, and the council did not act on it. What we have before us here tonight is with some of these rulings and some of the concessions that will now be potentially, I'll use the word potentially, if agreed to by the council, an issue of rent control to part of the park residents, 15%, and on top of that, there's a state rent control issue that overlaps. So for those that are truly in need, there are now legal protections for rent going forward based on whatever action the council takes tonight, potentially. One thing about CEQA is it is not a roadblock. It's just a task that the owner would have to go through. If they want to convert the park, they will convert the park, and whatever the cost of CEQA is, if I was the landowner, I would be passing that cost on to potential purchasers of those lots. I certainly wouldn't want to absorb it. I mean, that's the harsh reality. Unfortunately, you're on the backside of that reality. If you're looking to purchase your lot, the additional cost of CEQA could be added on to those lot costs. We don't know what those lot costs are, it's outside of our building control anyway. We do have leases going forward, five-year leases. If you sign a five-year lease to the terms of your liking, you now have financial stability based on the terms of your signing that lease. Other cities have negotiated similar deals and walked away and saw that as a benefit. Many of you do not have leases currently, year-over-month-to-month. Large percentage of you, I believe. Going forward, you will have that financial stability, and once again, it'll be your option to exercise that financial stability on your behalf. So as I sit here and I listen to the desires of the residents oppose this, if I was in your position, I wouldn't want to change either. I wouldn't like it. But we, as I see it, and I'll speak for myself, have very little options in this matter legally. I think there's some benefits on the table. I think they will help, but those change of life issues, all-age family park has already been set in motion, and it's going to roll forward. Those are my comments, right? I appreciate you all being here once again.
Okay, thanks, Steve. Those are, I appreciate those comments. Well said, although I would have to disagree with you on the windfall thing. I never heard or anticipated anybody getting a windfall. In fact, I think it's gone the other way.
Well, let's split it. If a coach is being turned in now because people want to break the lease, and that's one of the terms of breaking the lease, they just surrender the coach and walk away. Other parks, for instance, in Santa Paula, property valued itself for $100,000, now their coach, which they would be willing to walk away from, now does have value, and, you know, $20,000, $30,000 value for, you know, a used coach of 15, 20-year age, I don't know what they are, I don't know what the market is, but there is some value there. Now, a windfall, I'm not talking Donald Trump windfall, but there is something on the table potentially going forward.
I would hope so, but as far, throughout this whole process, it's been my, my feeling that people have been harmed, the residents have been harmed, they've lost their, their property because of this whole actions by El Dorado states. So I just want to...
I have one. Go down the line.
Yeah.
We'll go down the line. Unless you want to.
I'll go up to you.
I don't, I don't want to approve any of them, but once aside, I don't think I can disapprove of, however, a convergence legally. However, I would only approve it with the, with the proposal that the conditions of CEQA be met, which I understand breaks our proposed settlement terms, which means El Dorado is going to be mad at me, or us. So I am not in favor of giving this proposal's settlement term because my conscience tells me there are some tremendous environmental impacts, and I think we do have an argument there. I think when a city council person looks at any development, anywhere in the city, when the city planners from the planning commission looks at it, they look at environmental impact, and this is like the get-out-of-jail-free card. You know, this is like, okay, well, we don't have to do that, you know? And it's some, it's a kind of a quirk of thing that's been happening in California. My conscience tells me, okay, I have to look at the situation, and I'm told that you can't stop the conversion. Fine, but I still see some environmental impacts that are not being even considered, and I can't, I can't agree with that, and I want to agree with that.
I, I have huge problems with this, and I have had this problem since, since I was appointed in Generali this year. I think this is really important for, for all of you and the whole 300, well, potentially 300 people in the park, and these, to understand that we have no say-so in the conversion, and I think it's been said several times, you know, I want to also be able to say it. We cannot argue that. What I have a problem with is some tactics that El Dorado owners have used. I know one of the arguments that you're going to hear all over again, and which is 100% true, is that the city doesn't have the money to pay for the legal expenses, and it's absolutely true, yet it doesn't mean that we have, because we don't have the money, we don't have to do the right thing. I want to separate right now the conversion of the park. You need to toss that away because we have no say-so on that. What I want to, what I have a problem with is that even though we have the right to request CEQA, to see how that will impact every single one of you on parking and sewer and trees and everything else that environment will do, we will get away with that and we approve this. I have a problem with that, and it's not about the cost, it's about doing the right thing. And it's not about the cost, it's about doing the right thing. And not trying to take a core reporter, I mean, a personal favor, we have a core reporter over here, which the city can't afford to have one of those, but the people from the El Dorado send one, so we know exactly who's saying what. I cannot approve personally, constantly, turn around and say, oh, yeah, yeah, I disagree with this, and I know the financial consequences of this. But we have to, and it's my belief, and I'm being a little consistent in this, it is my belief that we have to go ahead and require CEQA, tell us whatever needs to fall, and then find a way to move over. And one of the things that I, that we'll separate here by Gretchen, Ms. Gretchen, I'm sorry, I forget her name, last name.
Charmaine Beuner.
Charmaine, I'm sorry. You've been pulling the whole name out. I have a tendency to change people's names. Charmaine was saying is that this morning, during the day today, you received an email saying, oh, 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 if you don't approve this, we will get you in court, and we're going to make you spend tons of money on this, and I know you don't have money. You know, right now, there's a huge campaign among the teenagers to say, don't allow it to be bullied. And I am not, on my vote only, I am not going to allow to be bullied just for the fact that we have no money. We still need to do this. Now, it's not what we want, but we still have to do, I believe, the right thing. How much it's going to cost us? Well, we're going to have to find the money. And I know, right now, our finance director and city manager are just thinking, oh, my goodness, where the money is going to come? We are already in red about two million dollars. But the decisions I feel that we have to do is not a decision about the money, it's a decision to do the right thing. I believe in the demanding CEQA, as we would demand in any other project, it's a must
On December of 2010, I was sworn into office, and one of my first votes was dealing with Resolution Number 10-3274. What a way to come into the council. Very difficult decision. This one is even more important. My first decision in December of 2010 was to vote against the resolution. I'm not going to be a broken record this evening. My concern has always been CEQA. CEQA is here to protect the well-being of all citizens. I have issues with, intense issues, with the livelihood of all residents in El Dorado. This issue on both ends, no matter what my decision comes down to, they're poor decisions, because no one has been helped through this process, no one, except the park owner and their attorneys. I find the figure of two-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand dollars appalling, unacceptable, not even within our means. And there is always a question, too, you know? That's why we have RFQs, what we just approved this evening. I will be voting against this Resolution Number 12337. My conscience and my heart will not allow me to approve this.
All right. Thanks, Brian. Well, gosh, this is, Brian's right, this is one of the hardest decisions that we ever had to deal with, and it keeps coming back. And who knows, it may be coming back again if we don't get some kind of resolution. I did want to clarify Mr. Richardson's comments about when I spoke at El Dorado, and the residents asked me what they could do, and what I actually said and meant was, I would hope that the residents, as a group, as an HOA, would send letters to the state legislature, asking them to clarify that Code 66427.5 that says that the El Dorado Estates are required to produce a survey. Now, the survey was overwhelmingly against conversion. However, the way the law is written and has been decided in several cases is that just because the resident surveys the survey, the council does not have the ability to deny the application. And that's why we've been in court, and that's why several other cities have been in court over the years, fighting this and losing this battle, because the state, that law is not clarified enough to give the council any authority to do that. So that's just some background on that 66427.5 that kind of was the basis of how we started. Yeah, Ms. Beuner's comments on her call from Hart King &amp; Cauldron, who's the attorney, her attorney firm for El Dorado Estates, they have bullied this, they've bullied the residents, they've bullied the city council, they've bullied our legal council. And they're very good at, but they, this is what they do. I mean, they go throughout the state and do this in other cities. They have a mission to convert all mobile home parks in the state. Well, I don't know about all of them, that's the goal. The council has been diligent since 2009 in fighting this on behalf of the residents. And as Brian and Eduardo and Jamie have expressed, all of us, our hearts are just breaking over what has happened to the residents over these years. People have lost their homes, their life savings over this, and that's terrible. And I don't see how these proponents of this conversion and the way they have gone about it, I don't see how they can sleep at night. However, we still have legal issues to deal with. As far as the CEQA Act, I'm hearing from accounts from our legal council that these CEQA items probably don't have any... Could you explain that to me again? What effect the CEQA will have if we deny and go and require them to do the CEQA application?
My concern is going any further with this dialogue between council and attorney if the vote is going to be different than what we had anticipated coming into this evening. That's my feeling, but you are free to direct otherwise.
All right. Well, you've already addressed the parking, the signal by ground stuff, so... I do have one other question. What if, what if residents don't want to buy their lot? What are their options?
They can continue renting. They do not have to buy the lot, they have the right to continue renting for as long as they want.
And do they have to, if an HOA is formed, do they have to pay HOA dues if they're a tenant?
Yes. Well, if they're a, no, if they're a tenant, then the owner of the space would pay the HOA dues. Now, whether the owner passes those along to the tenant, that's between the tenant and the owner.
So, anyway, obviously, there's a lot of questions that El Dorado Estates and the state has to answer. So, there is, I guess we'll have to consider... Quiet, please. I just want to reiterate how, that we understand how devastating this has been for the El Dorado community. The two-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand dollars that we've spent to date, you all have paid for that, as well as all the rest of the residents within the community. And that's a concern, too. While we want to do whatever we can to help El Dorado residents, you know, are we not being diligent in protecting our funds from litigation, from continuing litigation? This could go on, if we deny the application, there's a possibility this could go on another three, five years, I don't know. It will drain all of us. So, those are my comments, and I thank you all for coming out and speaking, and I know this has been a difficult process for everybody, is difficult for us, too. Good luck.
Thank you so much. Mayor, goodbye, May. It clearly, as your city manager, you know, it is clear that everybody wouldn't be here unless people are very passionate about it, and it's been a very difficult and painful process. And in terms of my, one of my jobs is to deliver a budget, as we talked about earlier to the council at the end of May, early June. So if we're proceeding down this path, that means that that budget is going to have to contain some choices, because this litigation is going to be very expensive. And so, the budget that I present to you will have those kinds of options available for the council to consider, and that's what June budget earnings are all about. I wanted to make sure that everybody knew that, because we don't, everybody's up to the record, we do not have funds. And so, it's going to be choosing, making choices.
All right. Thank you.
Mayor? I'm going to say what I'm going to say, and I know it's not going to make people happy, but it's going to be true. As council members, we're elected to protect the city. And the way we do that, the city manager politely was trying to tell us that it is our responsibility to protect the city, in the physical, fiscal health of the city. We spent two-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand dollars to date, and I understand where the council sits, even though it's not on the agenda, I think I heard what I heard. So, we spent two-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand dollars to date, and I think we owe it to the residents to vote tonight. It definitely will continue the legal processes, it'll definitely give, well, it's just going to continue the process for many years. There will be no finality tonight.
We'll go on record.
But we will be on record, and that's the problem with the view plans procedure.
You can come up to the podium, please, and state your name.
Okay, my name is Harry Williamson, I live in space 170, but I do have one question to ask this board. Are they paying you off in any way? Are they giving you thousands of dollars for this or for that or for something else?
No.
I would gladly give a thousand dollars, because personally, thank God, I can move. I would hate to, I love my beautiful home, and everybody doesn't have a choice. All I'm asking for is integrity. You know, could I read a scripture Bible, three verses, three verses? And my glasses disappear. And both lenses are in the room. This scripture is about giving. "And send the Lord tests the righteous and the wicked. And his soul hates him that loves violence. On the wicked he will rain cold fire and brimstone. A scorching wind shall be their portion of their cover. Will the Lord his righteous? He loves righteous deeds." Excuse me, I'm on three glasses. "The upright shall behold his face." Three verses, three verses.
Thank you. And then, I don't think, personally, I'll say, I'm never going to doubt...
I'm not even asking, I'm just asking, I know there's a lot of underhand stuff today. Our politicians used to hold their hands out like this, today it's not like this.
I don't think anybody up here is...
I'm not saying...
I have a few questions. Harry, if we were saving any money, this was over, this would operate without dealing.
Actually, yeah, it's a matter of record, so we'll go ahead and make a motion, and the council can vote. Move to adopt City Council Resolution 12-3337, approving a best intended tract map, 5844, based upon the staff's recommendation, subject to El Dorado Estates' compliance with requirements of Government Code 66427.5. And I'm going to add, additionally, upon adopting the settlement agreement between the city and El Dorado Estates.
I'll second that. And I do want to make a statement about the settlement agreement, and that is that we recognize that there are a lot of low-income residents who are struggling. Some of you here might not be in that category, but the hope is that this settlement agreement will protect some of those people who are in that category. So that is one reason that I would be in support of the settlement agreement, is because without that, those low-income and very low-income residents don't have any protection at all. All right. So, do we want to, we have a question in a second.
I just wanted to make one comment in respect to the legal costs that have trickled down. Councilmember Conway is absolutely correct. We have fiduciary duty to all citizens to fund. I will give credit to our city attorney, he has done cautious effort in trying to reduce the fees as much as he could. However, this issue is very delicate. It's not like every other issue that we decide on every other Tuesday. Yeah, two-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand dollars is a ton of money. When I took office, one of my goals was to do my best to reduce all legal fees, and I'm working on that. I have two more years to go. But I refuse to put a dollar sign before lives. This is an issue that, no matter what trickles down with the decision, it's not going to go away. So I stand by my decision, but I wanted to clarify, are these legal, this legal fee going? Thank you.
With regards to the legal fees, I want to make this very clear, and Councilman Brian actually squares that very well, too, but I don't want you to think that our attorney team is already here producing jobs for themselves and then get paid. The things that they have done has been under the authority of... The things that they have done has been under the authority of the council. We have made decisions in those eight, those sessions of this year and they have produced costs on the attorney. And I want to make that clear and I, and I said once before that we needed to clarify that, I don't want you to leave with that, with the, taking the mouth, whatever decision, whatever we're gonna vote, but taking the mouth, that, you know, the attorneys just cost us too much money because they're just a bunch of, they're creating jobs for themselves. They have reduced the rate, which we appreciate it. And they have, you know, done the job that we asked them, so I want you to leave that clear from here. So nobody goes over there outside saying, hey, you know, this attorney is just costing us a bunch of money because they just created jobs for themselves.
No, I agree and they've done the job. Litigation's been conducted very well. Anybody else have any comments? All right, we have a motion and a second, we'll do it voiceover, starting from the first one.
Aye.
No.
Aye.
No.
Absolutely not. Now, now that this vote has gone through, I, I personally need for you to understand that we're in the hole between 500 and 600,000 bucks. And if you can do big sales, if you can do whatever you need to do to help us with this, it's fine. I don't think that we need to try to increase taxes again because there's not a time to do it, but we need your effort. We need for you guys to help us clean the town, remove the shopping carts, doing whatever needs to be done to make this city the best city, clean city, so we can have the film people coming over here to give us revenue, to have the business coming here to give us revenue, sell whatever needs to be done, we need to do that because this is gonna cost us between 500 and 600,000 dollars, maybe within the next five years. So, please be aware of that, we need your help.
Mayor, so what we do need at this point is, what we do need at this point is a decision by the council to direct staff to have the applicant do the initial study under SEQA and come back to you after that.
Do we need a motion for that?
Yes.
Direct staff, okay.
I'll move.
Go ahead.
I'll, I'll move to direct the, the park, the rural park to do the, the primary work for SEQA, pay their bills and, and then bring them back together so we can review that.
So, the motion is to, to direct staff to conduct the initial study, correct?
Not yet. Not, yeah. To direct staff to have the applicant do, do the, pay for the initial study. Staff actually does do the initial study.
Okay, so we have a motion, do we have a second?
Let me just, we do have a motion, second, quick question. Say, if this isn't on the agenda, does it fall under?
Yeah, it, it's on the agenda in this, in this context of this hearing, yeah. Now, I, I will say that the applicant is not going to simply say, okay, here's $50,000, do your initial study. There will be a lawsuit filed and the costs are going to escalate. The cost will escalate whether it's me or whoever you hire to replace me, that will be very expensive. I, I understand you, $236,000, it's a huge number, but for three years of litigation, that is nothing. For three more years of litigation, I just want you to have your expectations that the initial study will not be coming forward next week.
All right, we have a motion, a second, on favor, say aye. Aye, proposed. Okay, we're gonna call the meeting back to order and we're gonna move on to item 10B and this is a public hearing and adoption of City Council Resolution Number 123334, overruling objections and ordering abatement of weeds, rubbish and refuse. Mr. Landeros.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council, City Manager. Every year, this fire department did, takes a inventory of lots that has overgrown weeds and rubbish and things of that sort. Before you, we have a couple of recommendations. The purpose of this resolution is to make sure that if we do get landowners or parcels that do not abate their weeds, that we have the ability to come in and get those weeds abated and then gives the city the ability to go through the process of recalcitrant costs via putting them on their property taxes. Before we get to the recommendations though, I want to make a couple of corrections on the attachment sheet on page 254. AP, APN number 041025013, and this is the Griffin Homes Inc., is not owned by Griffin Homes, it's actually owned by gentleman by the name of Jim Finch. So, the other Griffin Home properties that's on page 253, that property is still owned by Griffin Homes. And then also, address 311 Sesky Street, APN number 053005413, that parcel was also taken care of already, so we're gonna take that one off the list. So, recommendations is open this up to public hearing, so we can hear any testimony from anybody from the public, if anyone on this list, they have any concerns about their property being on the list. And to, to adopt Resolution Number 112-3334, abatement weeds, rubbish and refuse and overruling objections and abatement order.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions for Chief Landeros? I, I do have a question.
Sure.
And I was wondering if you would mind walking me through this whole process of how you identify the parcels, contact the individuals and how they respond.
What normally happens is that we have the three shifts, this happened to be two shifts because one of the captain, full-time captain's daughter got married, so Captain Billy Gabriel and Captain Al Puerta actually does a physical look at the properties and they write the properties down that have weed abatement problems or suspected weed abatement problems. We create this list and with the help of planning, actually it wasn't planning, it was David Burkhardt, with the AP numbers, gave us the addresses of these individuals that are on this list. We send them a, actually, last council meeting, we put the list before you and announced that we're gonna have the public hearing today, which is what happened today, obviously. And then, once you adopt this resolution, we still monitor those lots, when, if, well, prior to that, we send them a letter stating that their properties are in violation of the weed abatement and they need to be abated by June 1st. Once that June, then we monitor those same properties, three captains do go out and monitor those three properties and once we come up with an initial list that they have not completed at by June 1st, and then we start the weed abatement process. Historically, people wait, and I had mentioned this to Yvonne and staff many days ago today, that normally people wait till the last minute. Literally, the day before June 1st, they're there waiting at night trying to get things done, so they all have good intentions and they, 99% of the time, they do get the abatement done.
So, so is that 99% compliance of this list?
Compliance, that is correct.
Well, that's good to know, okay. All right, thank you.
And so, we open up for public comment or?
Yeah, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody who has property on this list that wishes to speak?
And then also, what I forgot to mention, as the properties get done, once they get the notices, they call, on the, on the letter we send out, it has my, both my cell phone number and my office number. And what, as they call, we go down the list and we go out and verify that it was done to our satisfaction. And then, we take them off the list.
Okay, well, I appreciate that explanation of the process and I have a question about one parcel. And that is, I think it's called the car wash parcel on 126 and?
Yeah, Orange Grove, yeah, that, that is on the list. The deepest part of that one is that we're gonna have to have that demo as well, there was a structure fire that was on that property that was partially burned. So, we, we are gonna start the process on trying to get the demo done in conjunction with the abatement. The abatement is gonna be the priority.
And the property owner will pay for the demolition?
That is correct.
Okay.
Chief Landeros, isn't the problem with that parcel that we've had trouble locating the owner?
Yes, we've tried to contact him this year and he has not returned any emails or phone calls. There's, he has a couple, three numbers, two of the three, he goes to disconnected and the third one, he just goes straight to voicemail. So, for whatever reason, he is not returning any emails or phone calls.
Okay, and, and now, there's a, you gave an estimate on the cost of the item. Now, that demolition, I don't know how much that costs, but is that, you just placed a lien on that property?
That is correct, yeah. And by, by adopting this resolution allows us to proceed with that lien.
All right, well, thank you. Any other questions?
I have one question, went back to the, the car wash, just for public knowledge. There is 211, Orange Grove, sorry, 643 Ventura Street, is that the same, is it that corner lot?
Yes, I think that's, I think it used to be divided.
It's two, yeah, so it must be.
Right, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You have a question?
I'm able to adopt City Council Resolution Number 123334, overruling objections and ordering abatement of weeds, rubbish and?
Sir.
We have a motion, a second, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Proposed? Okay, motion passes. Okay. Yeah, we're on item 11A and this is consideration of appeal. SCAG's decision to deny request for revision to the regional housing needs assessment for low-income category for the period of 2014 to 2021. Any questions?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. City staff followed your request and submitted a request for revision to SCAG on our population projections, the RONA numbers. We are one city of 13 cities that submitted requests out of 186 jurisdictions in the SCAG region. So there aren't very many revision requests. All of them were denied. We were denied the approval of the request or revision except for Ventura County. County received a partial or a compromise and I was told just this, yesterday morning that another city was approved the revision, but I can't find out which city that is, so...
I think it was La Pointe.
La Pointe?
Yeah, I think they had their, the boundaries drawn.
Okay. But all the other cities were denied, so the next process is we can appeal the decision and the appeal date is May 29th is the deadline, I believe, of May 29th. I believe the city manager will be meeting tomorrow to discuss this topic, but in the process of the appeal, we have the ability to trade and transfer with adjoining cities. That's the philosophy, take some of our units and trade it with San Paul and enter into an agreement. Initially, SCAG was stating that these agreements had to be with your contiguous cities and I believe they've made the decision now where that no longer needs to be the case. So, if the city of Fillmore would like to trade with the city of Los Angeles and go through agreements, you can begin that process. I have been told by the SCAG staff that whatever appeals are made, they're going to recommend a denial. The number given to the city of Fillmore is a number representing the year 2014 to the year 2021. The number is 694. That's, that's how many units we're to plan for and prepare for development. And we've prepared for over 1,400, so we can physically accommodate the 694, that total number. But, what, and that's SCAG, the SCAG RONA number. Difficulty is the previous housing element cycles, the last two cycles. When we haven't done a zone change or some kind of program in our last housing element cycles, those past housing element cycles get lumped into the next housing element cycle. That is the difficulty City of Fillmore will be addressing in our next housing element cycle of 2014 to the year 2021. And our low-income number can jump potentially up to 492 units.
In addition to?
In, in addition, no, that's, in addition, in addition is 272. So that we will have, we could potentially have 914 units total that we're to plan for, for the year 2021. And our general plan can accommodate that, but we planned for 1,400. But the difficulty is the low-income number. And it might be a housing element issue, but it's a number that gets addressed somewhere, either through the RONA process or through the housing element process. And for the low-income numbers, typically you have to build apartments or condominiums and those are pretty difficult zoning decisions that may need to be made in the future. So you have the ability to make an appeal. I know some of the other cities are doing it, the Oxnard in Ohio are following up on appeal and they're challenging a Calabasas and some of the other cities with a Calabasas. I'm sorry, I'm, I know mostly the directors, I can't remember which cities they work in, but there's another city, I thought it was Calabasas. And I know the city manager are meeting tomorrow and I think that's a topic of a discussion tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for staff?
So what are you talking about tomorrow?
Trading.
Trading? What, which cities would you be meeting?
All of them, all the city managers are supposed to be getting?
In Ventura County.
In Ventura County and if, to talk about possibly swapping or trading some of these numbers and if that doesn't work, and I know that the, that Hassan has been working to do it across jurisdictions, as in LA may be taking some of our numbers.
But we have to appeal, not for that to happen?
No.
We don't?
No, in fact, the appeal would probably be a backup position. If this can get resolved at the city manager level or by trading throughout with LA County or some of the other jurisdictions, then the problem is solved.
Okay, and I just want to let everybody know that I requested this to be discussed because when Yvonne and I went over to the revision request committee hearings and recognized that we, to move forward, that we would have to appeal, I just wanted the council to be aware of that and to have a discussion about it because it would be a commitment of resources, although I don't know what more extent than, than the original revision request, but probably some resources, so just wanted to let you know that. And then, also, I just passed out to the council, this is a memo from the V-COG meeting this Thursday that I'll be going to and it's an update from Rena's, the SCAG planning director. And it shows a table of all... And it shows a table of all of the jurisdictions and their Rena applications. And hopefully, they'll be successful with, at the city manager level with, with their trade and transfer program. One of the things that came up during the revision request was, if you look at Thousand Oaks, their Rena number is 192. And that's just, and Port Juani is too. Port Juani are saying that they're built up, which clearly, I think, we should be saying that we're built out when it comes to this 914 or 1,400 more homes that are in our general plan. And I say that because of the lack of open space that we have, and that's how Thousand Oaks is able to get their number reduced so much, is because they dedicated 30% of their city as open space, and we don't have any. I mean, we have a little bit of riverbed, I think, is our only designated open space. But it's, that's our general plan. Our general plan, in my opinion, was overambitious, and that's why we're being faced with this. There was too many numbers put into the, into the general plan. Anyway.
So, direction would be to pull off on an appeal?
Yeah, let's try the city manager.
Actually, we're not gonna have another meeting in time for the appeal, so what I would suggest is, we'll see if we can get it resolved among everybody. If we can't, then if you want us to appeal, you should direct us to do that.
What threshold should we use to set that condition of appeal? Would the city managers come and do an agreement? I mean, as a council, what threshold should be, is if you offload 10 or four homes, should that be the threshold? Should it be 200?
That's up to, to what you want to?
Okay.
We asked for 220, right? Okay, so we asked for 220. I would be willing to look at a partial revision, but?
The chances of us getting all of them are not?
Right, so that's why I would look, be willing to look at a partial revision.
How about 10 and a half?
Maybe 100, yeah. 110. And then of that, if we can't get that, then we file an appeal.
Better book in the eye?
Okay, any other comments?
Is that enough direction?
Well, I actually, what I'd ask for is like 50, maybe 210. Give me, if you could give me a range, instead of the, the just flat number.
Okay, how about 50 to 110?
I think that's a good idea.
Here's two.
Okay. I might learn more at the V-COG meeting on Thursday night, too. We're talking about it. Okay. So, we're gonna move on now to item 11B, and this is provide comments and direction to city staff regarding the 1/3 retail requirement for the Central Business District.
At the city council's direction, there was a concern with the economy the way it is, that we have one regulation downtown that is pretty strict, and it's inhibiting progress or improving the economy. And that is a zoning ordinance requirement that, for those businesses along Central Avenue, 1/3 of their space on the front floor must be retail. And the question that you had for staff was, well, what if we not have that requirement and allow offices and other kinds of things that can go there? And, and you directed city staff to first get opinions from the downtown merchants. And that's what I did, I called, I tried to have a meeting, no one showed up. So I decided to call them, and talk to them one-on-one, and I took down verbatim what they told me. And I asked if I could take their name and record their name and repeat what they stated. And so that's what I will do tonight, report back to you and provide to you some options. What it really comes down to, if you're an antique store, you want retail. And that's, was the answer, pretty much. Everybody else was saying that an office space is better than a vacant space. That is a phrase that I've heard to everybody. So they would rather have something than nothing, and to make the space look good. The other common refrain was, that they were all stating, was that the city should continue to have a mixture of uses, so that it's not all an office district, it's not all an antique district, district. But it continues to be a mixture, and it services not just tourists, but also all of the city. So they wanted the city to continue to push to do that. And then, just, I wanted to let you know the attitudes of the downtown merchants and the property owners. It was very good. I thought they were going to blame the city for economic problems, and no one did. No one blamed the city, and they understand the predicament the city's in, and that was a nice thing, they were all positive. So if the city council would like to change this requirement, it would require a zoning ordinance amendment. And we'll, we can start that process, we can do it at staff level, that's with a planning commission, we have a recommendation from them, with the city council, all of notice public hearings, that's one method to change it. And then, the other method, or I don't know, I haven't passed this with the city attorney, but it's a method that the, some of the merchants passed, is that we just suspend the zoning ordinance for a time period of about two to three years during this economic time, and allow offices to move in. And those offices that do move in, and they then be granted a legal non-conforming status. And then, this, then, that ordinance is no longer suspended, and it has a sunset on it.
You mind if I ask you a question about that? Well, I see some benefit to that and putting bodies on the ground, obviously it helps, but it seems to me that we're kicking the can down the road, because once we get a non-conforming use or an office space two, three years from now, how are we gonna sit there and rectify that, when is that inconsistent with the downtown specific plan? I mean, I'd hate to say, you know, time's up, you've been here three years, you gotta go. I don't like that. Of course, I don't wanna spend money to revise the ordinance personally, I think the ordinance in the downtown specific plan have merit. I think your comments about the economy and recession are all valid, absolutely, and that's creating a large part of the problem. But I'm concerned with what we might set up with a temporary stay.
Well, in that particular case, a legal non-conforming status, we would handle it like what we do today, we follow the zoning ordinance, which means that businesses can continue to exist, and they can even change out from office to office. There's a threshold in the zoning ordinance, and that says 90 days. If it's vacant for 90 days, then the next use has to be retail. And that's happening right now. And that's happening right now. We have a number of businesses that were existed, that existed before the 1994 zoning ordinance, and, and they change out from office to office to office. They don't stay vacant for 90 consecutive days. So that's one of the thresholds we have on legal non-conforming uses. But there are other options available to you. Instead of 1/3 retail, maybe we want to make it 1/10. Some of the businesses were explaining, all they wanna do is just display, have enough room to display a product. Or they wanted to be able to share a space with an office, and that they be retail, and they just have a display. So we could reduce the 1/3 space requirement. Or we could look at the land use matrix and exempt some businesses. We already do, we exempt financial institutions and banks and restaurants, we can attach that land use matrix to the staff report, and we can exempt some of the businesses, and allow some types of offices or some other kind of use to go in. We can, this requirement is in the Central Business District core area, and that means, that's the area from Highway 126 up to Kensington, and a little bit on the side streets. That's a pretty large area, space, maybe we want to only confine it to Central Avenue, where we're discussing about the palmetries between Main Street and Sespe. And then the other spaces can be, shrink, that's what I'm talking about, shrink the core, and allow offices in the other areas outside of the core. The other options are identified on page 261, but those are the types of things that are available to you. The, the most permanent one is to go through a zoning ordinance amendment and change the zoning ordinance. And I don't think there's a requirement in the specific plan, it's just the zoning ordinance is just that one section. I included for your staff report all the comments, so you see what the people said for your enjoyment. There's, people have some really good ideas, and it's, well, a lot of people just saying, just jobs, just work on getting jobs, we're fine. Some of the people said that, and they wanted to be left alone. But anyway. If you wanted to study this further, and I come back, or create a subcommittee, whatever direction that you offer, I'm open to those, and I'll run with whatever direction you do.
I, you know, Kevin, I wanted to just say thank you. This report is thorough, I appreciated all these comments comprised in this, this report. You know, it's, the comments and suggestions, I would say, are extremely helpful. I would say there was one occupant who made a comment about replacing the downtown, downtown signs along the highway that are better designed with less language, so people can remember the purpose, you know, less is better, obviously. I think that's something we can work on, yes, I think Steve's comments are, are valid. One thing that I would like to see focused on if we do proceed further is to, before something is approved, have even more hearings with, particularly with downtown merchants to agree if we do proceed, then they have more input into the design of this. It's great to get their, their opinions and, you know, their suggestions, but they're the ones being affected by this. So the other, the other issue that I think is, is another issue that has been, obviously it's an obvious tension, is, you know, people don't wanna see vacant buildings. You know, they're tired of light, they're tired of Fillmore downtown being a ghost town, you know? From 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, there's, nobody's there, so. So, those are my comments, but thank you very much for that.
Mayor? I think by practice, we already suspended this. There's, there's a doctor's office, there's a real estate agent, there's a dentist's office, for some reason, you know, there's, well, the pharmacy is retail, you know, but my, my point is, is the easiest, less painful way, if it's legal, and this is suspended. He asks, okay, that's not legal, so we have to rescind it? Yes. And so, the question would be, is it, is it more pricey to rescind it and change it completely, or just rescind it?
Probably around the same cost.
So we might as well do it the way we want it?
Yes.
Which is what, 1,700, 2,000? 25,000?
Do you think it costs for someone? I think the staff, of course, is 2,500, that's?
Yes, we're, yeah.
At the upper end.
Yeah. Well, I think, I mean, you're here for 2,500. If we wanna get people downtown, you wanna be, get people into the buildings, you know, which I think, at this point in time, is need. It's, it's a, I, I don't think the 1/3 retail has worked. It's a good idea, but I don't think it worked with the economy, because there were exceptions to the rule, notable exceptions to the rule, to get people in those buildings. That's our practice right now. So we might as well have the whole area conform to whatever our practice is, and figure out what our practice really is. I would admit, is that what we're doing? Mixed?
Mixed, the uses.
I would, I would rather, like, as Ben said already, rather to have a building occupied by an office, that people can come in and out, at least you see activity. Those empty buildings, every other place, is just terrible, so. So do we need to do a motion then?
No, I, I had some comments first, and then we can do, entertain some motions. First, I, I wanna tell you too, I love this report, I really appreciate you doing, going that extra mile to contact people individually, that was, that's greatly appreciated, and I love their comments, they are very helpful, and I'm gonna be looking at these, 'cause there's a lot of good information here. Yeah, I, I agree with you, Jamie, the, it hasn't worked, I mean, I can't remember the last time we had, had, didn't have a high vacancy rate. Can I ask some specific items? The bank building, have you had people wanting to move in there, how to reject them?
Not in two years.
Not in two years.
Prior to two years, the man's office, or the bank building. I was getting a lot of requests for office space for that building.
And what about the pool hall?
I have not received one request in a year.
Okay, any food?
No.
No, no other food requests. And, so you, but you are getting a lot of office requests.
I'm getting nothing.
Nothing, yeah.
Nothing in the last year and a half.
Really?
Prior to that, it was common for offices. It was hard for me to tell people, I'm sorry about this requirement. That was the most common request for the 18 years I've been here.
Okay. Well, and I've, I've said this before, and I'll say it again, every tourist town I go to, like Solvang, has a real estate office on every corner with, with billboards out there with houses, and that does generate a lot of foot traffic, which is something that, that we, that we need, is the foot traffic, so.
Excuse me, Mayor, why don't you make this suggestion? If we're gonna go down this road, I think it would be helpful if you put some sort of percentage on it, as a percentage of the whole, so that you still, as the economy starts picking up again, you still have some.
You lose your sales tax if you go down. If we, if we make a drastic change, what sales tax is generated from Central Avenue will evaporate. It'll quickly become all offices, and we'll have foot traffic at the beginning of the workday, lunchtime, at the end of the workday, and then it's a ghost town at night. So, you know, if we change from the 1/3 retail, 1/3 retail, then the benefits to the landlord. There's an ancillary benefit to businesses where people buying lunch, if that's the case, at the two restaurants on Central. But eliminating the sales tax, I, I can't support that. I think it has worked in the past, you gotta look beyond the last two years or three years. Central Avenue did start to have a vibe, it started having a nightlife, there was coffee shops, there was activity. The Maggie Apartments certainly appreciated, they saw a benefit to it, it started to work when the economy was good. Economy's not good, now we're not even getting requests for office space. So there's no guarantee that if we go down the road of office space, that we're gonna have people in the offices. That said, there will be a negative fiscal impact, in my opinion, if we do go the office route.
Okay, thanks for your comments. And you do have a point, Steve, but I still think we need to, we need to have some flexibility to get those buildings occupied, in my opinion.
Well, the other point, what do you do with the people who aren't compliant? I mean, to me, it's not consistent. If you're going to have a percentage, even if it's ten percent, you've got people there who aren't meeting those, then the, how, you know, how do we enforce these?
Well, I think, I think they use the word non-conforming use. They were there, they're still there. They continue to be there. If it goes vacant many days, then the building has to convert back to retail. Now, I might be willing to, or at least one-third retail, I'd be willing to maybe look at the size of the area and cut it off at Sespe, perhaps. But that one block district, you know, it's important to us. We realize that that's kind of the heart of our town or should be. But we need, there's a lot of things that we need. There needs to be businesses there that the people support. The people need to support the businesses. We need tourist traffic, you know, there's a lot that we need. So this is just one piece of that possible.
I would consider looking at the number three option, or, yeah, go down to one-tenth. Or, as the city manager suggested, do a percentage and say, I don't know what percent of retail we have right now.
Well, I can look that up to you.
Okay.
Look that up and I can do some analysis. For instance, we were looking at this in year 2000 for three-story buildings. The city council said only on corner lots and mid-block, not the whole block. Similar to that, we can create an ordinance that says retail's on the corner, on all corners or in the block or something like that. Give a percentage of, we know how many buildings are downtown. Identify seventy-five percent of them have to be retail or something.
Mayor, I may just, one more question. I think you'll private the last question. Has any ever come into a building and measured off the one-third retail space and said, you're at twenty-seven percent and you're shy, therefore you are not conforming to our agreement?
Okay. However, the city has disallowed people coming in because they couldn't prove they were going to have a one-third retail, hence the hair salons and whatnot, even though they did have some retail. Now they're there because somebody needs it up on them. So what I'm saying is we should, we should say what we need and mean what we say.
Well, for the hair salons, we did not allow them and then they were, they came forward to the city council and the city council said, well, you know, if that's a service you're providing to the community, it's a good service and we will allow to go in there if a percentage of your sales is coming out of retail. And so that's, so the direction is, do these salons are permitted per the ordinance, but also...
But you have to sell some retail. What does the mechanic do? He sells retail?
No. The mechanic is... Conditionally is permitted.
Well, my point is we prevent, condition what we want, don't, we have a law that, pardon, excuse me, that reflects what we're doing, you see? I know we're saying, yes, we want retail, but, okay, or we need to take it down from third. To make it easier, so the mechanic could sell batteries and that's a tip, you know?
Mayor, I interject. I think, I think staff's direction was just to kind of bring back a report to you. Quite frankly, we, we as staff have not studied this in any depth. We have not consulted with any of the other departments to see what impacts there may be on this. I'm sensing that the council would like to consider something along this line and I think maybe the direction is to give it back to staff, that we can come back with more of a consensus, look at it a little bit more holistically, see what the impacts would be, where not be, and then bring back something a little bit more concise for your consideration. Because I think, my original understanding was that you just wanted to get a sense from the downtown community if they'd be open to this. I think Kevin's report indicates that and my recommendation is, send it back to us, we could come up with a more definitive recommendation.
I like that. I mean, the staff report is exactly what we're looking for, which was a survey. It has nothing to do with the staff report or the survey. The feedback was great feedback. It had ranged again, do nothing, leave it, change it, and I looked for the correlation between those that own property and are vacant and have they wanted to change. I couldn't see a direct correlation in the amount of time I spent on it, but, you know, it's all good feedback. Now, clearly, the issue is not the report or the people providing the feedback. The issue is rest of this one.
Yeah, our people.
So bring it, bring it, let's...
We like what we got.
And if I could...
We could discuss it at an earlier hour or some other time.
I'd like to get some numbers, Kevin, like vacancy rates.
I knew you'd ask, I considered minutes and I didn't get it done in time.
And maybe if we could have a breakdown by percent of non-conformings? Of retails, of office, whatever, so we can kind of get a picture of what our existing looks like.
Okay.
Also, I would like to have some sort of direction as to the sales tax. I know it's, you know, we can't initially say this is how much we can lose or gain, but I would like something about an economic effect that would coincide with any of these suggestions that have been laid out between the one-tenth floor area to the one-third.
I don't know how.
First of all, that's...
Well, it's not going to be one-hundred percent, but it gives us a, you know, some sort of definitive way to go. I think that, you know, I think number one is the best option right now. We have, you know, whatever we do, we want it to be thorough and done well. So three years from now, we're going to have to come back and say, yeah, this was immensely flawed and now we get back to the drawing board.
All right, thank you very much. Very nice. Okay, we're going to move on to the successor agency, formerly known as the RDA agenda, and...
Move to the consent calendar.
Second.
It's a warrant list. Could I have a voice vote?
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes.
Move to the resolution of the successor agency administrative cost budget for fiscal year 2012-13, May 8, in accordance with Health and Safety 34171B, authorizing the executive director, or her designated, is her designated, to take all necessary actions with respect thereto on behalf of the successor agency.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. And before we take a vote, Glenda, did you have a presentation that you wanted to make about...
Fine.
Well, I would like to hear your comments only because I have an oversight board committee meeting on Thursday and that oversight board will be asking questions.
Ms. Mayor, before we proceed, can I excuse, I have a situation to have to discuss. Please.
Thank you.
Do you have anything specific? I mean, we adopted an administrative budget just recently. So this one's pretty much based on what we did with the original administrative budget.
Which is 298?
298, correct. I guess I didn't have any specific questions, but if there's anything that... I guess I did have a question. On the four-hundred thousand that they're disallowing for the town theater, that, so... Sorry, that doesn't have anything to do with the administrative budget. Oh, I'm sorry. I was on this, I'm vibing. Because we're on the administrative budget right now? Sorry about that. So, no, I don't have anything on the administrative budget. Just on the, the rocks or docks, whatever it is. Okay.
So we got a call question?
Yeah. Motion is second. We do a voice vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes four, zero. Point grabbed before you is now a ROPS that was supposed to be based on the last ROPS. But because of timing issues, we now have to do a second amended ROPS to the first amended ROPS, which we can't do until the Department of Finance makes decisions on what they're approving or not approving on that ROPS. So what we've done with this one is we took off the, some of the items that were the negative balances that are beginning balances and continuing balances were on the last ROPS. We continued to include the deficit for the theater on this ROPS because we feel that that's an RDA property. And one of the issues with the state was that we had put the date of 6/30. Well, according to the state now, it had to be as of June 27. Now, in any accounting, any accounting that anybody does, including the state of California, you do your year-end adjustments as of June 30. You do your audit adjustments as of June 30. So one of the things that we're looking at now is going back and saying, well, this balance really was a balance as of June 26.
Not just 27.
Well, it was passed as of June 27. So, you know, there...
It was passed on that day.
Yeah, that's what it was. Now that's what the state's going back and making it affect. The other thing they've done is they have now said you're only allowed a certain administrative allowance for the entire fiscal year, which is different than our understanding. So we're in discussions and with the Department of Finance. To be able to move forward, the county has asked that we prepare a ROPS for the period July through December. So until the, and we could go back and amend this ROPS. If we ever get second amended ROPS approved for the initial, then we could go back and amend this ROPS if they approve us carrying forward some of those negative balances. But we were being firm about wanting to continue to put the theater deficit on this continuing ROPS from July through December, even though we do not show any other payments. Part of our other discussion is whether or not we could actually call, if something happened with the theater and we were forced to sell it for some reason, then could we use those proceeds to help pay for part of that deficit? But right now, we wanted the theater deficit to continue on this ROPS until Department of Finance or the county...
Who are they saying owns the deficit? The city or the agency?
They're saying that the agency doesn't own the deficit.
Right.
That's what they're saying.
That's what they're saying.
That's what they're saying.
So if it was sold because the agency board decided to sell it?
Correct.
Right? They would not apply it to...
Well, that's our intention. We're saying that it should. This is, this is the deficit of this RDA's property and therefore if it is in fact sold, then that money should go and pay the deficit. Now, that would mean that the property wouldn't come from the property, property tax, whatever the property tax fund is. It wouldn't come from that revenue to pay the deficit. It would come from what would be called Form B, which is your other income. And that we would then say, okay, we're going to move this to Form B. We're going to pay the deficit out of other income, which would then be from the proceeds of the sale of the theater.
And are they saying that the incurred deficit is in-house, therefore they don't need?
They haven't really said. They just disallowed it. We sent a letter and we have not heard a response.
Did they, did they give a reason for disallowing? I mean, a specific...
Yeah, it was dated June 30. The date on the ROPS said that this was effective June 30 and they're saying you can't have anything effective June 30. So now we have to go back and we technically have to say, okay, it really isn't June 30. Three-hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand of the 392 deficit is as of June 26. Problem is, all our journal entries and our audit report are all dated June 30. So for us, we're saying June 30 is the date that this is the final application. So there's, there's splitting hairs and as far as we're concerned, it's the Supreme Court said RDAs don't get eliminated until February 1st. So where are you now being able to come in and say, you're disallowing it because it's dated June 30? I think you're going to see a lot of litigation going on, but in the meantime, the county has said, we need this ROPS from July through December, which you notice has a lot less on it than the original, because now we're getting into the need of winding down the redevelopment agency and requesting property tax to be able to pay debt service admin cost and... Because you'll see on this one, there is, there, we have included, since we didn't have the funds to be able to pay for the 20% set aside, we included that and we've reduced the amount from the original fourteen million down to six-hundred-and-thirty-some thousand dollars that is what we're now considering the amount as due on the 20% set aside. But there's only a certain finite amount of money that they're really going to give us and we still don't know. Some of the counties have notified their agencies of what that amount is going to be. We still have not been told how much they're going to actually give us in property tax. So, again, this is a ROPS based on some estimate that I don't even know if we're going to get this amount of money, which means we'll probably be back with them at the remaining ROPS.
If I may, the bottom line is the state is three billion out of WAC and you're not the only ones that they're doing this to. It's throughout the state, it's California, and they're just trying to rake back all the money that they can for the state. And so we're working with our attorneys to challenge their determinations that we feel we have a case. Whether or not we actually end up prevailing remains to be seen, but that's, that's where it seems to be right now. We're waiting till a word from them.
And the thing that we will never find out today is the product firm that's been hired by the county of Ventura wants to set a date to come in and do their field work to see all the backup that proves that what was on the original EOPS, the second EOPS, the first initially ROPS, the second first amended ROPS are all documents that really verify that these are enforceable obligations. This is the county auditor?
So, I would say a county auditor would be more of a ROPS expert than you. You ROPS a lot.
But the problem is that if they're doing that now, we're also trying to do the budget. So we have a timing that we need to work out.
Was that requested by Jeff Bird?
What's that?
The auditor?
No, it's required, but the county had to hire an auditor to come in.
So everybody's having to do this?
All the senators.
All right, thank you. Any other questions, Glenda? We'll entertain motion two. We'll entertain motion two.
Actually, we have a motion in a second, it's a call question.
Okay, a call question. I don't think we did number two.
Oh, I'm sorry, you are. Okay, so move to adopt the recognized obligation payment schedule, formerly and casually known as rocks, July through December 2012, dated May 8th, 2012, in accordance with Health and Safety 34177, authorizing the executive director or his or her designated to take all necessary actions to the rocks to the proper parties, take any other necessary actions with respect thereto on behalf of the successor agency.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. I'll call a voice vote. Councilman Conaway?
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes four zero. Okay, let's go back to our regular programming, and we're going to move on to item 12. This is committee commission and board reports. Councilman Conaway, any reports?
No.
Tony?
Yes, I went to a... I went to, I'm getting my Bs correct, Ventura Regional Sanitation Finance Subcommittee this morning, and the tonnage is down at Tolan. And so they're going to have to do some creative things to have more funds committed, is that sound familiar? And I am attending a Cal Vans committee Thursday morning. Cal Vans is, are these white vans that you see with the colors on in the front? And they are actually kind of rented out, leased out to workers that co-opt right together, and they actually make money. This is going across California, if I can mention that, of course. And so those are the two that I talked to recently. I'm also going to a VCTC meeting about the railroad next week, the branch line, which Filmar Western is trying to investigate the possibility of operating some freight in that passage from Oxnard.
I really don't have anything to report. I do want to mention, at the last meeting, I was, had plans to attend the League of California Cities Dinner. I was unable to attend due to an issue I had with the crime line, and I apologize, I wasn't able to attend, so just wanted to correct the record.
Okay. Thank you. My meeting I went to, actually, Yvonne and I met with some people from Livermore Industry last week. We're going to be talking about that in close session, so that's all I can say. And then, this Thursday, I have an oversight board committee meeting, and then a VCOG meeting on Thursday evening, so it's a long weekend. And that's all I have, so we're going to move on to item 13, 13B. Any proposed items replacement on future agenda?
I had a city council person from Ventura ask me about what Filmar's doing about the fit role ordinance. Is this something we need to discuss?
You know, I am the liaison for that commission. This was an issue that will be coming to the city council. Ms. Monica Nolan, hope I got her name correct. She met with Ms. Querin to go over the budget, and at that meeting, I was invited, however it was last minute, and I was unable to attend due to a conflict of interest with my scheduling. And what I mentioned to Ms. Nolan was that I would like for her to come to a city council meeting and give a presentation as to what this ordinance entails. There are some intense emotions with this, both sides, pro and con, are pro and against. So I think it's something that should be put on the agenda, however, I was under the impression that this was going to be brought to the city manager, so I never heard back on that.
So could we possibly have it come to the council, just as information, not voting on it, and then decide what we want to move forward?
My understanding in my request was to have Ms. Nolan come to the council, work with her for a presentation, and then we, as a council, would debate the issue and go from there. From my recollection, we're not, we do not have to sign on to this ordinance, but there are some, in my opinion, from the research I've done, there's more pros and cons, but again, I want people in the public to...
Well, I guess my concern is that I'd rather hear about it and think about it before I have to vote on it. I like the presentation, one meeting, and maybe a vote on it next, so we don't have to decide right then.
Do you have any plans for Ms. Nolan to make a presentation to the council or whatever? Okay. Well, let's just start there.
Go from there.
All right. Any other items for placement on future agenda? Any other comments from anybody else? Okay, then I guess we will adjourn into a close session. This is conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, City of Industry and City of Livermore versus City of Filmar. Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to speak on this item? Do we anticipate any, we don't anticipate any comments. Okay.